I'm looking for our clerk. Yolanda, are you dialed in?
He's under attendees. Can you bring her in? Please and thank you.
We need our city clerk.
Yep.
There she is. Move. Promote.
There you go, Yolanda.
Ah, we needed you. Okay, it's 5:01 and we have our city clerk. Yolanda, are you on? Can I hear from you? There she is, but she's muted. Yolanda, you on? No? There you are. Yolanda, can you hear me?
I'm gonna run upstairs real quick and see what's going on.
Okay, we'll hold for a minute until we get our city clerk totally dialed in.
Hey. I'm on there, but I see the mayor talking, but I...
Yeah, he can't hear you or see you. I need to get in your office right here.
Okay, bye.
So, Yolanda, you can see me, but you can't hear me. You can hear me, but you can't...
Yeah, but you just have to promote me to a panelist.
You did.
Because I'm there, but I'm not...
Mute, and you start your video. Guys, here you go.
Are you ready, Yolanda? Not yet.
Yeah, it's not on. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready.
Ready.
Okay, thank you, Yolanda. I'm glad you're all tuned in. We can't do it without you. It's 5:04. Let's call the meeting to order. And as an ordinary city council gathering, although this is a special session, I'd like to begin with the pledge led by Councilwoman Villarreal. A salute led by Councilor Garcia to the New Mexico flag, and our invocation led by Councilor Rivera, if we can all stand and participate in this part of the council meeting.
We're ready? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. One nation. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag. New Mexico. They assemble perfect friendship amongst united cultures. Councilor Rivera, if you'd lead us in an invocation?
Thank you, Mayor. If you can all bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us together this evening to discuss a matter that means so much to so many people in Santa Fe. We pray that we can make wise decisions and that we can be open-minded and mindful of all the many ideas that are out there. We pray for those people that have contracted coronavirus, that they receive a speedy recovery. We pray also for our government, all levels of government, and that we can come up with a quick remedy to this situation. And we pray this in your mighty name. Are there any special requests? I'm not the panelist, so if there are... I'm sorry, I'm not the head of the meeting. So if there are special requests, just wave your hand at me and we'll see what we can do.
Councilor Lindell, let me get to you. There you are. Okay, Counselor, I think you're unmuted.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just... As a special remembrance, and particularly in light of what we're working on tonight, I would like to have a remembrance that 50 years ago today, 67 shots were fired in 13 seconds on the campus of Kent State University. 50 years. Four killed, nine wounded. And it changed the country. It was the beginning of the end of the Vietnam War. And it was the end of the 60s. Additionally, I think that it's proper that we would remember that 11 days later at Jackson State, a shooting in which two were killed and 12 were injured. That one doesn't get nearly as much publicity as... There were racial issues at play that we don't like to acknowledge, but that 50 years ago, it's a long time. And it's incumbent upon us to continue to work to heal those wounds. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Vihil Copley, your hand is up for a remembrance.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to especially give condolences to the family of Mary Robinson. Mary Robinson was, has been in Santa Fe for many, many years. She was best friends with Lee Witt. Many of you know Lee. Mary lived and worked in Santa Fe. She was, worked for the Oil and Gas Commission. She also worked in several of the shillings in state government, at the state legislature. She was a wonderful, wonderful person. She has children, grown children here in Santa Fe, who have just been really stellar people in our community. And I know they're missing their mom tonight. She was just a joy to be around, and I will miss her dearly. So again, condolences to the family of Mary Robinson. Thank you.
Thank you. Others with a special remembrance? I have, I have one. My dear friends, Mark Rudd and Marla Painter lost their son last week in New York City in what appears to be a coronavirus-related health catastrophe. To be so far away from your son and unable to pull together the family and mourn, to recover his body, to have a proper grievance is so hard. And they give so much to New Mexico as a team that my heart goes out to them, and I want them to heal as fast as the rest of our country heals, if not sooner, because it hurts so bad. So, we love them in our hearts and we remember him. Let's take a brief moment to reflect on those, and then we'll resume. Thank you very much. Thank you all. And thank you for being here tonight at this special session. Clerk, could you please call the rolls so we can move ahead?
Mayor Weber?
Present.
Councilor Beta?
Here.
Councilor Cassidy Sanchez? Councilor Garcia?
Present.
Councilor Lindell? Councilor Rivera?
Here.
Councilor Romero Worth? Councilor Vihil Copley?
Here.
Councilor Villarreal?
Present.
You do have a quorum present, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please? I have a motion from Councilor Lindell and a second from... A second from, I don't know who.
Councilor Romero Worth.
Okay. Could the clerk please call the roll on the motion and the second then?
Yes, Councilor Beta?
Yes.
Councilor Cassidy Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Lindell?
Yes.
Councilor Rivera?
Yes.
Councilor Romero Worth?
Yes.
Councilor Vihil Copley?
Yes.
Councilor Villarreal?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved.
Very good. Thank you. So we move now to the item 4A, which is an introduction regarding a request for expressions of interest, the process, the purpose of the meeting, and an overview of the agenda. And I will take a moment to briefly set the context for our discussion tonight and our vote. I'm holding a copy of the minutes from the 29th day of July 2009, when the then-governing body voted to move ahead with the purchase of the, what we are now calling the Midtown site. And I have to say, I give those individuals, that body, a great deal of credit and a great deal of respect and appreciation for the courage it must have taken for them to step into what could have been construed as a white elephant, a millstone around the city's neck. And now we see some, 11 years later, is actually the greatest opportunity for the city of Santa Fe's future to assert our commitment to housing, our commitment to higher education, our commitment to jobs in the digital economy, our commitment to sustainability, our commitment to inclusion of the surrounding residential neighborhoods, and respect for the people who live there. Our commitment to integrating St. Mike's Corridor and our recognition that this opportunity represents a chance for the city of Santa Fe to create a new center in the middle of our historic iconic community. This is a truly a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for all of us to participate in crafting a master plan for the heart of Santa Fe. It's been a long and arduous journey to reach this evening. A lot of credit goes to Counselor Lindell, who was early on tasked with overseeing the team process to bring the project forward, and to our former colleague, Counselor Harris. The two of them really were the shepherds for a long time of this really challenging project. A lot of credit goes to staff as well. I think we're very fortunate to have Daniel Hernandez helping to guide us through this complicated and very important program. I know that there are folks on the council and in the community who feel that not enough public engagement was permitted in the process itself, and I respect that opinion. I respect that point of view. There are pros and cons for how we got to this point tonight. I think the most significant positive thing that can be said about the process is that it was free of politics. I know every member of this governing body observed the process by not getting into reading the proposals that were submitted. And we had proposals from around the world and around the country come into this exercise because we did have an objective and professionally managed process. All of us, I think, kept an arm's length distance and observed the requirements that it be treated as a professional, objective assessment guided by the resolution that was unanimously adopted by the council based on the input of the community. And so, having gone through that exercise and evaluation, scoring of the different proposals, and interviews with the candidates who want to be our partner, we finally arrived tonight at a vote over a, in effect, a contract with this proposed partner that will take us to the next step. This is not the end of anything. In fact, it's the beginning of everything. It is the step we need to take in order to move toward more community engagement, more community participation, more listening, more response to people's concerns and their aspirations as we move ahead toward those goals that guide us in the use of the campus and in the quality of the development. I think after tonight, if we approve this agreement, we begin in earnest all of those pieces of work. We go to work on the questions that have been sent to us by members of our community and the questions that the governing body has to contribute for our proposed partner and for each other. I think this is an enormous opportunity, and it couldn't come at a more important time as we face the impact of the coronavirus on our community and on our economy. So with that as a brief preamble, let me turn to our Economic Development Director, Rich Brown, to describe the purpose of the meeting and the agenda that lies before us.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to our governing body and our staff and our finalist developer who's here tonight, and also all of the citizens of Santa Fe who are joining us. I'm gonna run through the agenda as we have it for this evening. And the purpose of this meeting tonight is to review the deliberations and discuss the exclusive negotiation agreement that we'd like to move into. So after deliberations with the governing body, and we have a vote, we'll move into questions. So as we look at the agenda, we'll start with Aaron, the city... What the exclusive negotiation agreement is about. And then from there, we'll have deliberations from the governing body. So we hope that everyone on the governing body will have some questions that we can ask and answer. And then from there, we'll move into a vote, and our city clerk will take the vote. After the vote, Daniel will go into the background and info on the RFA and where we are in the process. As the mayor said, this is an ongoing process. This is not the end. This is the beginning of a next step of a process. So Daniel will go through the process of where we are in this ENA, this exclusive negotiation agreement. And then from there, Daniel will introduce a development team that will do their introductions, talk about their qualifications, and provide us with a presentation of their ideas and key elements of their approach. From there, we'll start to take questions, starting with developer questions. The developers have a lot of pre-submitted questions, which they will be able to answer. From that point, Daniel moderate that, and then we'll move into questions that are for our city staff. And from there, we'll then ask the governing body if there are any concluding questions that they would like to ask as we move forward into what will be a full agenda. And then from that, we will have live chat questions. We don't know what we'll get through them all because there are a lot of pre-submitted questions, but we will answer them. There will be an FAQ submitted, and we will have a separate May 12th Town Hall to answer all questions, whether they was pre-submitted, left open today, or left open in the live chat. So everyone's questions will be answered in due time, but we hope to get through them today, but we may not get through them, but we will, before the May 12th Town Hall date. Then from there, we'll talk about next steps, and we'll have Daniel speak about the next steps. As I said, this is an ongoing process, so we'll invite Daniel to talk about what the next steps are with the developer and with the city and our city staff who are a part of the process of moving this world-class development of Midtown forward. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Erin McSherry, who's our city attorney, and she will describe the exclusivity negotiation agreement, which we call the ENA. Erin?
Thank you, Rich, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and guests. I'm gonna give a little context on disposition of city property as well. There's three ways to dispose of city property. All options are required to result in just compensation to the city. The first of those three ways is a public sale, and that can be an auction or invitation to bid for the highest offer. And in that type of sale, the highest offer must be accepted. And that type of sale is best when the goal is to get the most profit, and there's less interest in collaboration with a purchaser. The type of sale that we're engaging in over the course of this multi-year process is through a competitive sealed procurement. And that could be through a request for proposals, or in this case, a request for expressions of interest. And a competitive sealed procurement sets out the rules and selection process in advance of evaluation of applications. This type of sale is best for dispositions of property in which the city wants something more than payment for land, such as specific development services that are in line with the city's goals. The third type of sale would be a private sale, which does not require competition or rules. And that type of option is best when there are not services desired by the city that would require a procurement process, and when there is less concern with personal or political preferences influencing the selection process. In the case of the Midtown property, the city used a competitive sealed procurement. And it was appropriate because the city's highest priority was not disposition at the highest price. Rather, it was collaboration with the selected applicants. The city desired good-faith negotiations to result in a development to serve public interests. In addition, competitive sealed procurement has other advantages, such as the application is open to all interested parties, and the rules of engagement are publicly stated before they are applied. In other words, personal and political connections are minimized in the selection process. There are some disadvantages, and the mayor went into these. The process can be long, and persons not participating in the evaluation process may feel left out. However, as the mayor mentioned, after this step in the process is when it becomes entirely open. And so if we do approve the exclusive negotiation agreement tonight, those terms will provide that KDC Sienda will provide the city a $25,000 deposit, and we'll start meeting with interest groups about development options. They will have access to the Midtown property to conduct surveys and assessments of the physical state of buildings and the infrastructure. And after months of due diligence and community engagement, they will have the obligation to propose plans for financing and phasing of development. In exchange, the city would exclusively negotiate with KDC Sienda for a 12-month period, with a four-month extension possible. The agreement could be terminated after six months if good-faith negotiations are not progressing at the wish of either party. Before six months, termination would only be for cause, meaning a breach of the agreement. Approval of the agreement will take the competitive sealed procurement to the next step and allow the recommended developers to make their presentation tonight and to meet the public. Thereafter, their submitted proposal will also become public. Amendments to the agreement, if permitted under the parameters of the request for expressions of interest, would require further negotiations with the developer. Denial of the agreement would result in the city needing to restart the disposition process, unless the reason for denial is that the evaluation committee failed to apply the criteria in their request for expressions of interest or inappropriately recommended KDC Sienda under the rules of that... or inappropriately recommended KDC Sienda under the rules of that public competitive sealed procurement. With that background, I'm happy to answer any questions about the agreement and any specific terms.
Are there questions for the city attorney at this point? They can also be raised, I assume, later, but it if going over what, what Aaron just shared with us about what the import of the so-called ENA is, if there's anything that anybody wants to get clarified, this would be a very good time to do that. If not, we move on to the council members, the governing body members, having an opportunity to speak to the proposal on the table and any other matters you'd like to bring to bear on this conversation tonight. So there is no particular order to the speaking of our members. If anybody wants to raise a hand and either address the ENA specifically or other factors in this vote tonight, I think we should dive in now. Councillor Cassidy Sanchez?
Well, thank you so much, Mayor. So I did have a couple of questions about some of the specifics in the ENA, specifically looking at the timeline, knowing that we are in strange times these days and things do not happen the way we think that they will. So one thing that's mentioned is that if there are delays caused by COVID-19, that we will be able to extend the ENA past the 16 months. Is that correct?
That's correct, councillor, and I think that was really important to both sides. There could be just anticipating that there could be orders in the future, and if either the city or the developer is unable to perform, that the term would be extended by the number of days that they're unable to perform based on those emergency orders.
What do you mean by, by unable to perform?
So say the city wasn't able to review their application for some sort of land use later on in the process. Then, then the period could be extended for that. So say we had to close down some sort of operations that were required or an inspection couldn't occur, or if they couldn't perform some sort of a site assessment that would be required for the physical properties of the campus. They might have other examples as well of things that they anticipate doing. But, but some examples that came up already.
So I mean, one of the things that I'm really thinking about, as, as we've already discussed, the community engagement piece has been such a huge component. If, if the developers and our community engagement partners state that there have been delays and really being able to engage the community, which pushes that timeline back due to the changes because of COVID, would that be something that would allow us to, to extend this agreement?
I think if both the city and KDC looked at, so Schedule D, Schedule C, it's an exhibit to the agreement, sets out a lot of the required tasks that would happen in kind of sets of months, starting with, I believe, zero to six months, and then there's an overlapping period of time from four to 10 months, that kind of thing. If those tasks weren't able to be achieved satisfactorily and both parties were in agreement that they had not been able to be achieved, I think, I think that's right, councillor, that we would have to look at extending if it was based on an inability to meet those, those parameters, right?
That, that does, then this might be a topic of conversation to discuss at a later time. I think one of the things that I have been most concerned about coming into this process as a councillor in the middle of it and discussions about whether or not we feel that enough or that individuals feel that enough community engagement has been done. I think what's really important to me is establishing those, those benchmarks of how we can really measure community engagement and if we have hit the mark to a place that is satisfactory to the council. Would, and Daniel, you may be able to, the one to speak more to this. Will that be something that we will be able to take and put into that ENA and be looking at whether or not the tasks have been met and whether that might warrant extension or also if, if things are not working out?
Sure. Well, currently the ENA references the public engagement process and it talks about the development of a public engagement plan that will be established by a community advisory board. And that was intentional because we didn't want to preempt a community-based advisory board to talk about the tasks and the schedules within that time and actually define what success means upfront as part of that as part of creating the public engagement plan. So it's embedded within the, within the tasks that are outlined within the ENA and will continue to provide updates to the council for their ongoing oversight and input to that process. And that's one of the requirements of the scope of work that will be monthly updates, written updates and as needed presentations at upcoming council meetings.
That's, I'm really happy to hear that the council will be able to really dig into that and, and have in-depth conversations on a regular basis on this piece, because I think that's really crucial to ensuring that we do our due diligence during this ENA period. I'm, I'm sorry, my notes just say Midtown District Association. Tell me more. So can you please elaborate on this Midtown District Association?
Well, for now, it was part of the discussion during the interview process and part of the submission package from the developer. There's an, there's a, you know, one of the desires that we all have is to make sure that the programming at Midtown, once it begins to flourish and have a life of its own there, that there will be ongoing community programming for public events. Again, we're talking in, in a moment of, of the pandemic. But the hope is that we'll actually have a very public place with big public open spaces that will be programmed. And so oftentimes at the district scale on projects like this in cities, there's a district association or neighborhood association that's created that helps to kind of oversee and define and talk about evolving desires that a community might have with the kinds of events that would happen there. It also looks at the maintenance and management of those, of the, of the district. So we talked a lot about the type of district association that would be needed for both public programming as well as management and maintenance of public infrastructure in the district. So again, it's right now, it's conceptual, but we were really glad the developer even brought that up because in the long run, it's going to be really important to make sure that the, the public-private partnership lives throughout the life of the project so that it remains a really great place to, to live and visit. We can't hear you.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Horizon commercial throwback. So, and that, so that conceptualization and development of really what that Midtown District Association, that's part of this ENA process and part of the tasks that are laid out there, correct?
Yes.
Wonderful. Um. And then I'm, we will have opportunities to really dig into discussing with the developer later, correct? Right now, we're really focusing on the, the content of the ENA. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Okay, then I will yield the video for other individuals to really dig into that ENA. So thank you so much.
Just a quick response to that, and I won't take up a lot of time to this other stuff too, but you know, past tonight, the developers have a strong desire to meet with each one of you individually to talk about these kinds of questions, how we make them more public as well, the questions that you ask of them, that other leads that they should just sort of follow up on. So they're excited to be doing that in the next phase of you know, the next chapter, I should say, of this process.
Okay, is that councillor woman, is that okay for now? Okay, thumbs up. Councillor Garcia, I see a big hand up in your square.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please excuse me, I do have a, a number of questions for folks. But I guess the big burning question that I've been kind of top of my mind is what happens with the property? So we're going through the CNA. It gets developed 15, 20 years down the road. What does the city own? What is privately owned? What does that future look like?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sure Daniel can contribute to this answer as well. But I, I don't think we, we don't know yet, and that's what this public process and this next year will be helping to, to establish. There's certainly certain elements that were in the Midtown guidelines that the proposal from these developers are able to provide in terms of higher education, housing, other pipeline education opportunities. But the master plan is not in front of the governing body tonight, so really the, the city will have the opportunity to work with the developer to create that master plan. And that, that's what will be the defining force on what this, this area looks like in 25 years. But I'll let Daniel go further into that.
I think that's right. And I, I don't have much more to say, other than in the RFI and the solicitation that we sent out, we said that we're looking for a developer that can can manage to redevelop in those 64 acres, the total amount of acres on that site. We also said that we want to hear and work with them on identifying the best strategy for either selling and or leasing the property over time. And again, it's, it's going to be very important for the public and particularly the elected officials and city department heads to be reviewing strategies for disposing, meaning selling or leasing the property to make sure that the benefit, the, the city benefits in the long run, whether it's through, you know, gross receipts, tax returns, whether it's making sure that we have public facilities out there, which maybe we lease and or sell and also the, the, the open space. So I think there'll be a combination of a lot of different ways that we're going to be disposing, meaning leasing or selling the property, what remains public in the public hands and what remains in private hands. So that, that's part of the reason, that is one of the main reasons why we wanted to go through this solicitation process and really open it up so we can have that dialogue about what most benefits the city in the, in this transaction.
And thank you, Aaron, and, and thank you, Daniel. So maybe I'm incorrect in hearing you, but so next steps are for the public to be engaged to determine what that future looks like?
That's exactly.
Definitely a part of it. Yep.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just trying to wrap my head around our last major development here in Santa Fe where we redeveloped the rail yard area and where the city maintained ownership of the land and we allowed individuals to purchase rights to develop commercial property. We retained the rights to the land, but folks were able to develop commercial properties or housing, whatever it may be. I, I'm glad to hear that's, that's not off the table. So, so I guess I, I, sorry, does somebody want to chime in?
No, you're, you have the floor.
Okay. I as well was, have been very concerned whether, I mean, whether I was engaged in this process after January 1st, but prior to that about the community engagement piece. And so going through the negotiation agreement, it talks about the public engagement committee. What is that?
So as, as the evaluation committee concluded its service of reviewing the responses to the solicitation, everyone identified a need for an ongoing organizational structure in order to interact with the developer once they came on board. So there were different committees that were created. One was called the Master Developer Committee and meaning that it was mostly looking at the physical infrastructure of the site, infrastructure, streets, the master plan, just different elements of the physical space. And then there was the Community Development Committee that looks at all of the social, the social fabric of the, of a neighborhood, levels of affordability, the types of civic facilities we'll want to see at the site. So there'll be the interface for the developer to cover that. We also knew that there was going to be a robust public engagement process. So we created a public engagement committee that would, again, interact on the public engagement process. So there are, there, there are a committee that the private developer as well as the community advisory, the, the public engagement advisory board can interact with so that we have an infrastructure within the city that can be responsive and participate in these different facets of the development of the site.
Okay, so, and, and my next question was about the public engage or the community development committee. So both of these, have they been established? Do we know who the members of the committees are? Are they, are we going to pick those members in the future? Can you elaborate on that for me, please?
So there's the public engagement committee that's within the city and that you had that, I sent that document with the, sort of the governing structure of how we you know, create a public partner for the private develop, for our private partner to create this public-private partnership. The Community Advisory Group for the Public Engagement Plan has not been established. It's one of the first, it's one of the first tasks that will be undertaken by our public engagement consultant.
So if a member of the community wanted to participate, that would be a great place for them to play a role?
Absolutely. Again, we didn't want to create it within City Hall. We wanted sort of, you know, a community-based thinker and advisor to help structure that process, which would include creating a community advisory board that would be, their, their main function would be to create a public engagement plan and to manage it, monitor, tweak it along the way so that we make sure that there's a there's a process that people can provide input.
Okay, thank you. My, my next question gets to the heart of, you know, terminating this, this agreement that we're going to be entering into tonight potentially. Who can, who can terminate it? Is it the council? Who has the authority to do so?
Mayor, councillor Garcia, when the, when the council enters an agreement, then you're the entity of the city that has the power to terminate an agreement as well, unless you otherwise delegate it. In this case, there is no delegation clause, so it would be the council.
Okay, and what would be the steps for that?
So there is a termination for breach, which could happen at any time. So basically, if an element of the agreement is breached and then there is no cure within 30 days. And then there is a, after six months, if either party, after good faith negotiations and attempts to remedy whatever the issues are of feeling to be able to come to good faith negotiations, then either party may terminate the agreement. If they don't see a likelihood of reaching a disposition agreement for some reason.
Okay. Lastly, I, well, before, I mean, there's, that, like I said, lots of questions, and I do want to allow the other councillors to ask questions as well. The RFI submissions, when are we going to make those public?
So the, the proposal by this developer can be made public if they are accepted as our partner tonight through the exclusive negotiation agreement. As to the other proposals, if they are still considered to be in competition, then they will be confidential. If, there, there's two ways that they might not still be in competition. One of the ways would be they withdraw from the competitive process. The other way would be that the evaluation committee or the council decides that should these negotiations be not successful, we would not consider any of the other proposals. And then those, and we would cancel the procurement in relation to the rest of the proposals. And then they would no longer be in competition either in that scenario, and so then they could also become public. But during, if they're still essentially, if they're still waiting in the wings in case something goes wrong, then they remain confidential. And if the city's willing to consider if this process were unsuccessful, a secondary choice, then they need to remain confidential. And the reason for that is to protect their information as, as their proprietary proposal while this is going on. So basically, if they still want to be in the running essentially, although, I mean, the goal of the city entering an exclusive negotiation agreement is for a successful outcome with this developer. Then, and those are, those are the various scenarios. But if if we enter this exclusive negotiation agreement, the proposal from this developer will become public.
Okay, so only the person we're agreeing on potentially tonight would become public. I, I know the RFP process pretty well. The RFI is something new, I think, to a lot of folks, and I think that's something that's been somewhat challenging for folks to wrap their head around and, and as well as I'll admit. Is there a way for us to make public all of the submissions?
Yes, so there were the two, the two options. One is if, if any of the applicants decide to withdraw and not have their proposal be eligible, should negotiations with this developer not be successful, then they may make their proposal public and we also may make their proposal public. The other option would be is if the governing body decides that you would not consider any of the other proposals, should these negotiations be unsuccessful, and then they would become public. Or if the evaluation committee essentially recommends and you decide to go with that recommendation for the same thing, that they don't think that anyone else should be considered should something go wrong with these negotiations. And then at that point, the proposals would be public. And then at that point, the proposals would be public.
And and this is outlined in the RFI process? I mean, I'm just wondering where these.
This this comes from the state, yeah, the Mayor Weber, Councilor Garcia. This comes from the State's Procurement Code, which the city adopted in January of 2018.
Okay, can can we get the language for that? Because I definitely would like that, just to ensure constituents know where we are using our standing to, as we communicate to constituents about the process.
Definitely.
Let's see, lastly, I mean, I I know that we've got a lot, a lot of questions submitted to us through our email address dedicated, and I know we're going to answer, get them answered later. But I would like for us to answer questions prior. I think it's or we need to do due diligence and questions that pertain to the city. We should answer those questions prior. And I don't know what the process for that would be, but I I would, if that requires making a motion to do so, but I would like to have those questions answered prior to a vote. So, City Attorney, I'd like your guidance on the matter.
Mayor Weber, Councilor Garcia, the question is how to have the city answer questions? Is that what your question is?
Yes, so I know that we were given a spreadsheet of questions submitted to the dedicated email address, and it's been broken down by whom the respondent would be, whether it's the city or the developer or what other entities am I seeing on here? It's primarily city and developer. And I wish there was the opportunity to have the developer answer questions. But what is the process to have these questions answered prior to a vote?
Hey, Weber, Councilor Garcia, if you, so right now, the council has the floor. So if councillors have any questions of either the city representatives on the agenda or whoever else is here, or probably the spokespersons for the the developer too, if it's relevant to the ENA, if it's something about their proposal, we can't ask those questions until after the ENA. But if you have questions about the terms of the ENA, you can ask any of those questions now.
Okay. Is it, is there a process to find out what questions are germane to the ENA? I I because besides me reading off every single question here that was submitted, which I don't mind doing, I mean, it's going to be a long, late meeting. But I think it, we we owe it to the constituents to answer questions that were put forth prior to a vote. And so if there's a way we can find out what questions that were submitted that are germane to the ENA, that we do so to answer before a vote. And so I'm looking, I mean, there's four pages I've got of questions here. I I don't I don't know the next steps, that's why I'm asking for guidance. And I don't know if any other councillors feel the same, but I I feel it's, I I would like to have these questions answered at a full transparency to before a vote.
I remember, Councilor Garcia, you're welcome, you're welcome to ask any of the questions.
Okay, but what happens when I start getting off? Because I'm just, if I started reading and get off the topic and and non-germane, is it somebody just going to say that's not germane? I mean.
Try that.
Okay, so then, let's go. What will the, what will be the city's role once the master developer is on contract?
Okay, so that was part of my opening remarks, Councilor Garcia.
I I understand, I understand, Aaron, but I want to ensure that the constituents have their questions heard. And whether, like I said, whether it's now in the presentation or later, we want to ensure that the constituents, who are the taxpayers, who are current, the current owners of this property are having their their voice heard as we move forward. So I know that, like I said, this is where, I'm not trying to be redundant. I apologize, but this is where I wish we would have had a process to have these questions answered prior to a vote. And if this is the process we have to go through, I apologize. And I apologize to the public and to everybody that's online and to the councillors and everybody that's participating in this meeting. But I think it's the 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 right of the taxpayer to have their questions asked. So with that, what will be the city's role once the master developer is on contract?
The city through this, so it's it's an exclusive negotiation agreement, right? There's lots of types of contracts. Mayor Weber, Councilor Garcia, the city is in exchange for all of the services being provided. Will provide access to the site and will negotiate exclusively with this developer. This developer has a team who will be presented this evening and may expand their team in the future. So the city's role will be to work with that developer to see if a productive relationship can be established.
Great.
Daniel might have more to that.
No, I I I don't. I I do want to make a comment, though. And so we we have an approved agenda. The questions were coming later. Are our councillors in agreement that we're revising the agenda so that we're doing questions and answers before the vote, then?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman.
And on on the point that Councilor Garcia is making, I do agree with him. There's questions in this list that are germane to the ENA document or process. And I would have liked to hear what they were. And it's not his job to sort through those to say, okay, this is germane, this is not. And the fact that we received this about an hour before our meeting is hard for us to like sift through them. So I'm wondering if there's a staff person that can actually go through them to see if there are specific questions? Because I I did see some that were specific to this process. And I would, it would be helpful to have those questions put forth before we go on, that before we make a vote, only because they are germane to the this process of E and N discussions.
Well, I I'm a little stumped on our process because as Daniel says, we have a an agenda that talks about governing body deliberations. And of course, everybody has brought questions to the process from our own research and reading of the proposed agreement and from our experience up till now with the where we got to tonight. And there is a promise to answer all of these questions going forward. I don't know that we are in a position to suspend our our deliberations while we ask some, I don't know which staff person to suddenly begin to sort through the public-sourced questions.
Mayor Weber, just as a a point of clarification on the process. So this is similar to when we have a contract on an agenda for a governing body meeting. And because the approval is not based on criteria that are not in the request for proposals in those circumstances or the invitation to bid or that type of thing, the risk we run of not basing this on your questions and really about the the exclusive negotiation agreement itself or anything related to RFI itself is that criteria would be used in this deliberation that were not included in the public process, that the applicant did not have notice of, that they would be evaluated based upon. And I guess in terms of answering public questions, I think I've been answering public questions on a very frequent basis whenever I receive them. I know Daniel has, I know the mayor has, I know many others have. So we've been trying to provide that in real time over the last many months. But in terms of questions to be taken into account on this particular agreement, they really need to be about whether or not this agreement is in line with the procurement itself and whether or not it followed those rules.
And I do think, you know, the point is a good one, that people from the public have substantial interest and questions going forward. There is a process for getting all of those questions resolved on behalf of the constituents. We have more than 70 questions submitted just in the last couple of days. And there's a a great deal of work to be done to respond to those. But I think everybody on the team, both of developers and of city staff are committed not only to answering those questions in a document, an FAQ, but also in the going-forward meetings with the developer, with the town hall that Daniel referenced that is already scheduled, should this agreement pass tonight, for a second chance to engage with this exact kind of Q and A. So, and I think every councillor has a set of questions that they want to explore. I thought Counselor Cassidy Sanchez's questions about what the boundaries or the use of a of a district is completely speak to what's in the ENA. Questions that Counselor Garcia raised about the public input process are totally tucked inside the ENA. I I I think if we go after 70, if right now we attempt to in in entertain 70 or so questions that were submitted, that are many of which or some of which we'll begin to answer later in the agenda for tonight, I'm afraid we'll we'll end up undermining our own process and particularly and potentially at least dealing with some of the legal issues that the city attorney just raised.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I think what I'm going to do at the moment is I will sift through this list, and I'll ask for time to ask questions back after my fellow councillors ask their questions and and ask the ones I feel that are at least germane prior to the vote. And and it's not going to be all 70. I know that there's a lot of them on here that do pertain to questioning after a potential vote. So so but I I will ask that I be asked given time to ask questions here after.
Absolutely. I think that's, I think if you can sift through or combine your own questions that you didn't get to with some of the things that you've noticed, we can come back around.
Counselor, I'll be doing the same as well. So we'll we'll see if we can match a list together. But I I'm I'm going to, unless there's a question, someone just call me out and I'll do it. But otherwise, I'm going to be sifting through them and not focusing too much on questions. But Renee, I mean, Aaron, let me know if there's something you need to call me back in on.
Okay, and I think I think Aaron's guidance on what is the the nature of our proceeding tonight is useful to keep in mind as well.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Very good, councillor. Councillor Woman Vihil Koppler, your hand is up next.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I I would really like to thank city staff, the evaluation committee, and and everyone who worked on this. It it did take a long time. I know that they were probably frustrated, as we are tonight. But, you know, they did young work, men, much of which we know nothing about. But I know they worked and certainly want to thank all of the interested parties who made some middles. Want to thank the the top three who garnered, I guess, the best opinions about what they wanted to offer and including the company who is for us tonight. Lot, lot of thought went into this. The the thing, and and I'm very appreciative, and I think in the end, we we ended up where we are tonight with this submission. But there's really a big hole, and it's it's already been referred to by my colleague, Counselor Garcia. And that is that public is has been terribly left out. And and every single communication that I've received has has proved that. If we had, I didn't even know we had 70 questions because we just got them. We got everything that we're considering tonight at, begin last night, all the way up to 10 minutes before this meeting started. This is a major decision. So so, I mean, I haven't even read those questions. And obviously, the time, the clock struck, and and here we are. And and it it just appears, this whole thing seems to be very rushed. And if I could create analogy to me being in my business, it it's it's like, you know, as the public feels, I I because of what I've received, you know, it's like, here we have this property. It's our property, the taxpayer property. But if you could compare it to, you know, trying to choose a contractor to remodel your home, somebody else is going to choose that contractor. You have no idea who they are, how many contractors they talk to. And they're going to remodel your house, and they're going to make all kinds of suggestions, propose ideas, and and then that's going to get considered. They're going to decide whether you add on or the landscaping. They're going to decide all that. And then you have no idea who you're going to, what they're going to do. But then you have to come back and and that person just says, okay, vote on this because that's all you got. And and I, you know, that just doesn't make any sense to me. But I'll go to the 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 art, the request for expressions of interest is not a request for proposals. And I know that may be a moot point now, but I think that the interpretation of how we would have proceeded with how with how that process was going to work could have included the public. And and I want the public to know that many of us sitting on this council, and maybe I already said this, but we don't have an idea either. We have very little, and I know we've had many executive sessions, but most of what we were at, most of our questions, we couldn't get answers because it was confidential. So that's a very limiting process, not only to us as a council, but to the public. And it is the public's property. Midtown is not mine, yours, any of us here, it's all of ours, and it's the public. So I just, I'm at a loss because here we are again at the end, and and this is what we have. So I just want the public to know that that we don't hardly know any more than they do. But we have this contract now, as they do. We got it last night, and we got a revised, a slightly revised one this morning, barely this morning. And so I'm going to take a stab now. Well, maybe the other thing I want to say before I ask the questions, this Midtown property is in my district and also Counselor Cassidy Sanchez's district. I don't know about her, but I know I have not been able to answer any questions for my constituents, nor have they had any opportunity to find out what is going to happen in their neighborhood. And I know they're going to have all of these different things that that, you know, we may involve them. I think it's said that we will, but it's it's not definitive how that will happen and who will be asked for input. And some of these individuals are not, you know, not well-represented in terms of their their culture, their language and such. And so that does concern me. These are neighborhoods, longtime neighborhoods, and so far, I've not been able to answer their questions. And I and I think it's important for them to know that, what it is that we are doing here. But everything is is just been so, I I want, I won't say secret, but it's been confidential. And and this whole thing bothers me to no end, but here we are. So I hope as we go forward and the choices for these committees and such, that District Four councillors are involved to the to the greatest extent because this is in our district. Getting over to the the actual contract before us, on page two, and I, one of the biggest, and I'm still getting it tonight, is are we selling this property? And I've heard sort of bits about it, but on page two, it refers to transfer of Midtown property from the city to the master developer subject to the disposition and development agreement. Now, the disposition and development agreement seems to me to be synonymous with some kind of purchase agreement. And I finally did read down somewhere on page 13 that the disposition development agreement will be approved by the city council. Thank God. And I'm wondering, and it says the disposition and development agreement has to be completed within this twelve months. So I, I don't think I'm reading that wrong, but I do want some, I guess maybe the city attorney, I mean, just give a, a yes or no answer. Are we selling this property? And what is this disposition and development agreement? Is it some kind of purchase agreement?
Hey, however, Counselor V. Hill Copley, the disposition and development agreement is not established yet and it could be any type of disposition. It could be a lease, it could be a sale. I think we contemplate that at least portions would be sold. But we, at this point, it's not, it's not established yet. So it, it could be a purchase agreement, there could be leases, there could be leased to purchase. And in terms of the twelve months, it's a twelve month extended up by four months. And then also with those potential term extensions, if there are delays due to the emergency orders in place.
Okay, so then on page two, the language transfer of Midtown property from the city to the master developer. To me, transfer means sale. Or, or do, you know, how will that work? If, if we're going to lease the property, then the city still owns the lease? And are we going to become lords? Or is the master developer on this table tonight going to be landlord?
Mayor Weber, Counselor V. Hill Copley, those are the types of terms that will be deliberated upon over the next term of twelve to fourteen, to sixteen months.
Okay, I, I mean, that's not a good answer for me, but I hear you. Okay, and this one is, so I consider this $12,000 to be akin to a down payment, so to speak. But I do see here where two thirds of that, I, I think the city will retain and the other third. What is that though? What is that for?
Mayor Weber, Counselor V. Hill Copley, if you're speaking about the $25,000 deposit?
Yes.
Then that was contemplated in the request for expressions of interest. Any developer that was recommended would be required to provide a down payment. And yes, it would go towards the purchase price. The city can use two thirds of the funds towards due diligence that it's also engaged in or any services that are related to this disposition.
Because on page thirty-four C, it says for the conveyance of the property and conveyance means transfer, transfer. It could mean transfer, it could be, be sale. But anyway, that's why I was looking at that $25,000, even though it's referred to as a fee. You know, it's kind of earnest money is what it is to me. And the negotiation is that two thirds of it, the city, and the other third is, is for, I guess, the developer to convey the property.
Mayor Weber, Counselor V. Hill Copley, one third is refundable should we not reach a disposition and development agreement. It will then, if it's, if we do reach a disposition and development agreement, then that will be retained, that third.
On page four, under the term, item two point three, says the city manager shall have, well, the, the term is for twelve months. The manager should have the right to extend the initial term. The city manager isn't a party to this contract, it's the city council. So why would that not come to us if the term needed to be extended?
Mayor Weber, Counselor V. Hill Copley, the proposal is that that be a delegated power.
Okay, I don't agree with that. And then I'm not sure if this is a public question, should I ask it and then you decide?
Mayor Weber, Counselor V. Hill Copley, can you give a general, anything in the contract is fair game. It's posted online already, other than the roster of team members.
Santa Fe Art Institute is excluded from lease expirations. And why is that?
Mayor Weber, Counselor V. Hill Copley, I believe the Santa Fe Art Institute has about a ninety plus year lease on the land already that's in place. It was in place when the city acquired the land already.
Okay, so it's like the real yard, sort of, sort of that kind of deal. Okay. On page eleven, five point three one, progress reports are due in thirty days. Will, will these, and I hope the answer is yes, will these go to the city counselors? I want to know what's happening every thirty days, especially if I don't know what's happening now.
Mayor Weber, Counselor V. Hill Copley, I think one of our anticipated purposes of those reports is to provide them to the council. That's correct.
Okay, it doesn't say that in this agreement and I would like that added. So I don't know, maybe I'm already cooking up some amendments, I'm not sure.
Mayor Weber, Counselor V. Hill Copley, I think there would be other ways to require that of city staff and their public record. There'll be public records no matter what. So really that's not an obligation of the developer. So I'm not sure we need to require the developer. You can just, city staff will give it to you. Or you can write a resolution to make us give it to you if you want, but it's not really kosher to this agreement.
Well, the progress reports don't, don't really say where they, this contract doesn't really say where they go, if I recall.
Right, Mayor Weber, Counselor V. Hill Copley, this contract doesn't require certain city operations to occur. It's really about what the city's obligations to the developer are and what the obligations to the city are. So the developer is obligated to give us those reports. As to what the city does with them, there would be different mechanisms to require the city to do something with them.
Okay, well, then I guess I have to play watchdog some more. But the, the next question, I'm, I'm relying on you. There is a certain, and suppose I can't mention the, well, I guess I can because in this thing. And, and that is that KDC Siena has a member who's on the planning commission. Can that be disclosed?
Mayor Weber, Counselor V. Hill Copley, I think that was disclosed in the text of the, of the contract. So yeah, so if that member is still sitting on the planning commission when KDC Siena has a matter in front of the planning commission, that member would be required to recuse themselves.
Can we, can we ask, can I ask you that?
Yeah, Mayor Weber, Counselor, well, actually, Mayor Weber, Counselor V. Hill Copley, since that's a member of the team who's, it's part of the proposal which becomes public after we vote on this. I'm happy to answer that question or I'm sure the developer is after the vote occurs if, if it's favorable. And then it's part of the proposal that'll be become public after the vote as well.
Okay. I, and I think it's important for the public out there watching to, to know because this planning commission person, while, you know, bless their heart, they are, I don't know who it is, was his or her heart. Hopefully, you know, they're, they're going to get to sit back out of the meeting quite a bit because when this, when, when this group comes before the land use processes, there's going to be a lot of zoning and land use and permitting and all kinds of things that, that are going to be required, even though this is in the Midtown Link. It's still going to be required. And so that person, you know, we need to keep an eye out, that person slips out the door. Okay. On page twenty-seven, and I'm not sure if I'm still in the contract or not, but there's several committees. I know Counselor Garcia asked about them already. There's some that haven't been asked about, the Midtown Finance Committee. Tell me who that is.
Mayor Weber, Counselor V. Hill Copley, I'm going to probably tag out onto Daniel on this one. I don't have that document in front of me. Daniel, the question is the membership on the finance committee. I think I'm the attorney member on that, but then there are staff also involved. Daniel, do you hear the question?
I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
The question is who are the city members on the Midtown Finance Committee?
Yeah. Let me pull that up. So the, the council was sent the organizational chart for all the committees, but I'll, I'll find it.
So it must have been ten minutes ago.
Nope, that was sent last week sometime, actually it's been sent a couple.
Maybe you can refresh my memory.
Sure. Actually, it was in the original, it was way back in February when you received it, when you got the full package of all the RFI documents.
Well, it's changed since then.
No.
So just the answer.
Yep, I'm looking for them right now.
Mr. Mayor, on that point, maybe while Daniel's looking, because I don't, I also had the same question of who serves on the Midtown Finance Committee, Negotiation Committee, Community Development Committee, Public Engagement Committee, Master Development Committee. And those actually weren't given to us. We knew who was part of the selection.
I'm on the Dropbox right now and it's on there, the one that you guys have, but I'll read them out to you if you want me to.
Why don't you just go through it? Because I think these will all be requested before the evening's over. So you might as well do it all at the same time.
But if you guys want it in the future and if you want to circulate it to whomever, they're on their Dropbox for the organizational structure. So Community Development Committee, also called Socially Responsible Development. There are, there are four departments, four issues that are one, two, three, four, five, six. Economic Development, Housing, Arts and Culture, Film and Media, Multimedia, the amenities and the programming of public open spaces. The current members of that are Andre Alex Salazar, Alexander Ladd, Pauline Kamiyama, Christine Mihalsek, Lee Logston, Kira Otreya, Janice Krish and Rich Brown. The Public Engagement Committee includes Eli Isaacson, Alexander Ladd, Pauline, Christine, Jesse, Elizabeth Camacho. On the Master Development, also known as the Environmentally Responsible Development Committee. Infrastructure, it includes infrastructure, circulation, zoning, sustainability, utilities and water. Sally Paez, Melissa McDonald, Shannon Jones, Eli Isaacson, Regina Wheeler, Eric Allen, Marcus Martinez, Jesse Gleyen, Sam Burnett, Noah Burke and Stefan Pellegrini. Stefan Pellegrini is the principal at Opticos, who is the urban planner advisor on the economic analysis team. On the Finance Committee is Erin McSherry, Mary McCoy, Brad and Deana Belzer. Deana Belzer is the principal of Strategic Economics who leads the economic advisory team. So those are the committees, I believe, you requested.
Okay, then one, one question related to the Public Engagement Committee. On page thirty-two, it refers to a public engagement consultant team. What is that?
So in the memo that I sent over the weekend, there are next steps. And one of the next steps is we are currently finalizing negotiations and scope of work with, with the UNM Design Planning Assistance Center. And they are speaking with additional community-based organizations to develop the consultant team. One of their first tasks is to create the community advisory group that I also mentioned in the memo that I sent over the weekend.
Okay. Back to the Midtown District Association that Counselor Cassidy Sanchez referred. This is like an HOA. Are they going to be charging fees or what, what is your vision? Because when you answer the question, you know, like you say, oh, we were just thinking about that, maybe we'll do it. It sounds like a good idea. Are you going to do it or not? And, and what, are they going to charge fees? And, and what do you, are they going to govern the whole sixty-four acres or what is that about?
Again, a district association is an association that's often set up in districts scale projects like this. We anticipate that it will, it, there will be one and the ways that it will generate operate, an operating budget, the way that it happens around the country, these district associations usually have fees that help them become a, a sustainable operating entity to be able to do their job.
And this will disclose to everybody who might be wanting a piece of the Midtown? I suppose.
I understand the question.
Okay, then on page thirty-two, you refer to a mid steering committee. And what's that?
There's an existing steering committee that's been in existence over, I don't know, since 2018. I'm not sure when it started, when I started working and advising the city, they were already in existence. Two counselors were members of that, including the mayor. And it was comprised also of director level staff. They still exist, they meet the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month in the morning and they're called the Midtown Steering Committee.
So how will that committee, what will that committee's role be in reference to all these committees that you spoke of?
They'll contend, their, their role is really as a, you know, as a, as a governing committee to advise and monitor and manage. Again, this, you know, they're all director level staff, city department staff, including the, the city manager.
Okay, and I, I, I do believe, Mayor, I asked you at one time to be a member of this committee and I hope that would be something you would still consider.
Counselwoman, the, the elected officials are no longer part of that committee, including me. It's only staff at this point.
Mayor Weber, Counselor V. Hill Copley, I think around the time that the recommendation from the evaluation committee was made, the steering committee transitioned more into just operations of the current ongoings at the campus because the other, the other Midtown issues were going to be evolved into this process. So it's more about like lease compliance with our current lessies, insurance issues, repairing roofs, that kind of thing. So it's, it's been very much a day-to-day oversight to make sure that those operations are accounted for as between the various departments that it takes to help operate this property while we still own it, which is pretty significant.
Okay, thank you for that. I, then I wanted to scoot over exhibit E, which is access license. And again, page thirty-six, five, when it talks about the term, I, I just point this out because I, I still am unclear about what, you know, whether, well, it looks like we're kind of selling this property. License granted shall terminate and decline to proceed with transaction, including termination of any transfer agreement for the property or the date of closing of the transaction. So in this license agreement, it also for to a, a purchase. So I, I think this is important for me to bring up because again, the public really doesn't know. And I really didn't quite know that, that what we're doing, we haven't decided. And I realize there's any part of this that will move forward in the next months. Should this be approved? But it contemplates the sale or of this property not in full. But there's unanswered questions about what's the city's role will be with our de-leases. And maybe I, I need to go back to that and Aaron, maybe you can answer because if the city sells parcels and they're gone, we don't own them. Tell me again, who will own the leases?
Mayor Weber, Counselor V. Hill Copley, most of the leases on the property have very short terms.
No, no, I'm talking about few leases.
Mayor Weber, Counselor V. Hill Copley, if, if the developer is the owner of the property, which is possible, then they would be the ones leasing the land. So that, the idea is that ideally all of this would be subject to a master plan, which reflects the city's, the community's priorities. So whatever, whatever uses they are would be pursuant to that master plan.
So after twelve months over and during that twelve months, we will develop or be faced with approving a disposition development disposition agreement, disposition and development agreement, which is the sale of the property. So.
Mayor Weber, Counselor V. Hill Copley, that is, that is one possible definition. That was a term used in the request for public, for expressions of interest. So it was publicly defined and was part of the process. And it said it could, could include, but it was not limited to a sale, certainly.
Well, I think because we are now further down the road and we have this in front of us and it's using all these terms and they're in this contract, it sure seems to me. it sure seems to me if it looks like a duck, it's a duck. It looks like we're selling this property. And the, I don't even know if the public knows that, and now they know it. So I just need to make that statement, because that's what it looks like to me. So I may have comments later, but that's, that's the end of my notebook right now.
Okay.
But thank you.
Councilwoman. Next, the floor belongs to Councilwoman Veria.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all for joining us on this call and the public out there listening. I especially want to thank the staff and the Selection Committee that were part of this process. I, we know that there was a lot of work put into this, a lot of review of the documents that we couldn't see. And just putting your thought process and your expertise into play is important, and so I appreciate that. I have a few questions as it pertains to the ENA, and my colleagues thankfully asked most of it, some half of the questions that I was planning on asking today. I think what is confusing is that ENA is very legalese, so it's not like you can extract questions per se in this forum. I do have some comments that I will add to the end of this, that my question piece, but first, the reason why we brought up those committees, and because they were kind of embedded in that development framework schedule, it didn't make sense, because we weren't quite sure, even if Daniel said that there's, they were outlined, it's because we knew there was a selection committee, and then we didn't know how they were going to fit into that. The one committee you didn't mention, Daniel, was the Negotiation Committee. And can you say a little bit about what that one was going to do, or who makes up that, and what are they charged with?
So the Negotiation Committee is, it was, we anticipated pulling together, at that time, we had, did not make a decision about who was going to sit on Negotiation Committee. Right now, the Steering Committee served in that capacity, up to the point like Erin was just saying, that we created the Evaluation Committee, because it was all that work to get it done. It's decision-makers. It's people who are going to actually sort of formulate what can, what should go into the development agreement, so that we can present it and include the governing body along the way. So they'll be, they'll be negotiating terms, and we'll probably pull in, it depends on what the term is. If it's an economic development and jobs creation issue, clearly we'll bring in Rich Brown. If it's affordable housing issue, we'll be bringing in Alexander Ladd. But the idea is to help, you know, to create kind of the core issues. A committee that will be able to address the core issues of development.
So that hasn't been formulated yet, even though it is in the Development Framework Schedule?
Yeah, the exact people who work will be on that, have not, but we anticipate it's going to be people who are, you know, representative of the other committees.
Okay. So the Community Development Committee that you mentioned, and then it's kind of, in my opinion, an afterthought, talking about the Community Advisory Group. So how does the community, I'm sorry, the community, there's so many committees here. Public Engagement Committee and the Community Advising Advisory Group, how are they going to intersect and, I guess, work together?
That's a good question. So we created, again, we created this Community Development Committee to be able to sort of, what resources, what resources does the city have that will be brought to the development, the overall development? And so we identified these areas of concern, interest, economic development, housing, arts and culture, film and multimedia, amenities and programming. So we, what we want to do is at least establish a committee that can, that ideas as they come, as they come forward through the public engagement process, and/or ones that the developer presents to the city's ideas for the redevelopment of the site. So they're representing the city's interests in this transaction and negotiations and creating development plan along the way. The Community Advisory Group, the idea of taking it out of City Hall and putting it into a Community Advisory Group that's managed by the UNM DPEC and, and community organizations, was to put it into the community's hands of creating that community engagement plan. But part of the role, the role that DPEC and their team will have is, where are the avenues in which the developer and the city interact and intersect with that public engagement process? But again, we wanted to, we wanted to allow it to unfold and have it independently of the city, but at least now, we've created this infrastructure for that Community Advisory Group to interact with the city using this Public Engagement Committee and this Community Development Committee.
But we don't have an understanding about the structure of authority between the Community Engagement Committee and the Community Advisory Group, and how they relate with the master developer?
With the Community Advisory Group, their sole responsibility is to create a public engagement plan, monitor it, tweak it, manage it. That's their, that's their, that's their mission. That is their purpose. That's why it's called a public engagement or community.
Right, but if there's something that they don't agree with, with the developer, how is that going to be figured out or resolved?
Process?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we'll have to mediate all of those things, and part of what this group will help us do, and, you know, to help mediate where there may be tensions and concerns and other things, I'm sure that will run along the way. None of this is going to be easy.
Okay, so in the ENA, there's no mention of local partners, and I was curious why? And is there a need to at least mention that there's local partners? Or even local partners and/or master leases? Why did we not mention that in the ENA, since they're pretty integral to this process?
Do you mean the development team members? I'm not sure.
Yes, well, some of them are master leases. Some of them are considered local partners and/or both. So I guess I'm trying to figure out if there's a need in the ENA which creates kind of structure for the master developer. If there's a, I mean, there's no mention at all of the team, the local team. So I'm wondering about that, if there's a reason why, and maybe our city attorney can elaborate on that.
Yeah, it's probably better.
Counselor, I was just looking for another document. Could you, you repeat your question, please?
Well, the ENA is very specific to the master developer and their plans as we move forward, but there's no mention of local partners. And, well, obviously, the importance of that, but also just that they're of a team, and they're made up of local partners and/or master leases. So I'm just wondering why we didn't include them in the ENA.
Mayor Weber, Councilor Vehil, are you saying why we didn't include the local partners that the master developer is working with?
Not the name, but just even a mention that there's local, a local team as part of the master developer team.
Yeah.
At least I didn't find it.
Yeah, it's, Mayor Weber, Councilor Vehil, it's in the, it's, yeah, it's the reference, so it talks about the team roster, which is Exhibit D to the exclusive negotiation agreement. And it talks about how that team was included in the applicant's proposal, and that they they basically will be working with that team, sorry?
Did you say that in the, in the contract, I mean, in the agreement, there's a reference to roster, and then we have the exhibit, right?
Correct, yes. Mayor Weber, Councilor Vehil, it is incorporated into the agreement as one of the exhibits, and it refers to the team roster, yes, other local. Well, it's local and regional, and it's various levels of partners.
So if a local partner or master lesee is drops out for some reason, is there a requirement in some way that the master developer would have to find another local partner to fulfill that expertise of that particular person? And I bring that up because of our financial, our economic and financial situation in the city and these local partners. If one were to drop out because for economic reasons, they are no longer either existing, or they can't fulfill their role, is there something that we need to say or do in the contract that would require them to pick up another local partner to fill that, that void or expertise that they're seeking from the local partner?
Mayor Weber, Councilor Vehil, it would depend somewhat. And, and I think that depending on, on the circumstances, we could require negotiation on that point. So basically, or we could find that it's, that it's not going to meet our needs after six months. If we find that we're not able through, through good faith negotiations to meet that need of the city, then that might be a reason to not, to not move forward. And then if they're going to substitute someone, then we need to be part of that evaluation, yeah.
I think that's extremely important. I thought it would be somewhere in the contract, but the roster, I think, helps to fulfill that. It's just, you know, one of the things that, I guess, to be honest, I wasn't, I didn't feel like this was a strong application, only because I think what made it a strong piece for me, aspects of it, was that there's local partners. And some of those local partners are integral to our community, and so to see possibly anyone drop out would worry me. So that's why I'm bringing that up. And I just think it's important to, that's a big piece of this development proposal, and the fact that we have local partners to make it happen. I'm going to go back to the Request for Expressions of Interest, the RFEI. Sorry, I hate that acronym. It's never worked for me. And I guess what I'm wondering is, we never really explained thoroughly about why the RFEI, and as it relates to ENA, ENA, why that process was the best model to use in this case. And the reason why I bring that up is I was referring back to Resolution twenty-eighteen, when we outlined next steps for our planning stage. And it indicated that we would prepare one or more requests for qualifications or requests for proposals for the procurement of a professional consulting services in order to produce a land development framework plan. So this entire time, I guess I was thinking framing it like RFQ, RFP, and I wasn't quite sure why we were, we kind of switched to what is called an RFEI, and why that was the best model to use in this scenario for this project.
Yeah, Councilor Vehil, Mayor Weber. So in the resolution that you're referring to, I think that procurement that's being referenced is what was used to procure our, our consulting services, which we're working with, the two names of the company, Daniel can fill in the blank on those, that we're working with for land use and design consulting services. The, the RFEI really is a type of request for proposals. It meets all the legal qualifications for it. I think what Daniel was trying to signify to the public, and I think it worked, is that we were, this was something special. That it had other, it was essentially a combination of requests for qualifications and a request for proposals. And the applicants were evaluated both on their, their history and qualifications, as well as on their proposed scope of proceeding with the project, really, and what, who they brought to the team, whether they could meet those evaluation criteria, the Midtown Planning Guidelines. So the idea was an objective process that was based on those guidelines, but also to be able to, sorry, that was my cat making an appearance. But he's hungry. So.
So am I.
Yeah. But basically, basically, it was bringing those two worlds together, using objective criteria, both about the candidates to be selected, but then also what they were bringing to the table. So Evaluation Criteria looked at both of those things. And Daniel came up with this particular name for, for the way that we would call it, that reflected the fact that I think that this is a process that's iterative. It has, the original proposals were really about interest and who the people were, and then after that, we have the opportunity to work with them.
If I may, also, it, you know, it's a, it's a process that a lot of cities around the country use when they are not quite sure what they want to see at the site. Oftentimes, a fairly conventional RFP is used. When you have a site, you know you want X number of units of housing, X number of square footage of commercial, and it's fairly, the parameters are fairly well set. An RFP is often used for that. The other condition, too, was when I first walked in the door, the mayor and various city council members were getting calls from businesses who wanted to locate there, to developers who wanted to develop their, either a site or the whole thing. And what we wanted to do was to say, all right, what are all these ideas that are coming forward? And how do we allow people to walk through the same door to be able to do something at the site? So the RFEI allowed for a broad range, a diverse range of ideas to walk through the door that we can evaluate. The hope was that we would get an extremely qualified developer that could help us knit those pieces together. And we indeed get seven responses for master developer, master developer responses, all highly qualified. And that's where we are today, the finalist. But the idea was to try to be as creative as possible, but using processes that are tried and true in other cities. I mean, you can type in RFEI in Google, and you'll see various cities using this as a methodology or providing the opportunity for people to submit their ideas, if that city does not have a clear idea about what's feasible on the site, what the communities want yet, and wanting to partner with the developer to create that in collaboration.
But we really didn't, as a governing body, approve an RFEI process. You all decided that that was the route we were going to take. And I bring this up because that resolution, as it's outlined the next steps for our planning stage, it was really about making sure that we would prepare one or more requests for qualifications or requests for proposals for the procurement of professional consulting services to produce a land development framework plan. Who did that?
Well, again, the RFP was defined already by Erin, saying that this was an instrument of an RFP. It's not any different with what an RFP provides. So we were using that as the frame. The other thing was.
Just a quick point of clarification, Mayor Weber, Councilor Vehil, and Daniel, that, the consultants, I believe, is Dana and our outside contractors. Those are the consultants. That was, that was separate than the RFEI.
Okay.
It was, yeah, it was pursuant to that provision that we did procurement for our consultants, who are still on contract.
So there's that piece, the, what are they, Opticos is their name? So that's one RFP. The other one was the Community-Based Process for Public Outreach and Engagement, working with local organizations to collaborate on the design and implementation of the public outreach processes. So that process, the RFP, that happened last year with the group from Philadelphia, and they pulled out of the contract. So ultimately, we got part of the RFP for the economic analysis from Opticos. We didn't do the community-based process for community, for public outreach and engagement. So those two things didn't work, and that's what's been hard for me about this process. Part of that happened, community-based process didn't happen, and we still moved forward with the RFEI process. And that is why I think it's been confusing for the public. It's been confusing for me and frustrating, frankly, because we were on track in kind of a parallel track to do the RFEI, even though we never used that term, we never really decided, hey, let's do that. We were told this is how we're moving forward, and so it never aligned. And that's what I'm challenged with tonight, is that we're moving with an RFEI, which is now the ENA. And part of what we had talked about in the planning state, stage from the last resolution, never, never actually happened. So we were not really on track, and it's hard for me to then backtrack and say, okay, we will do community engagement. And I think what's, that's what's hard for the public, too, is like, we had stated this would happen, and then it was kind of put on the back burner, like, okay, we'll get to that, we'll get to that, even though the RFP didn't happen with the public engagement piece. And so I guess for, Erin, for your, just from my understanding, you explained how the RFP is different from our RFEI, but, so why didn't we follow with the community engagement RFP? Why did we follow a different path? Because that didn't happen, but we never, we never moved forward with like, okay, that didn't happen. We, let's go back to the drawing board. I just. We, let's go back to the drawing board. I just feel like that piece was missed. And I don't know if you have a comment for that. It does relate to the E N A, because the E N A and the R F E I, that had to happen simultaneously with the community engagement R F P. And it it never happened in the same route, like legally, like how we look at R F Ps and R F E Is. The community engagement process, R F P, did not follow the same track. That development, that group that was um selected, they left, and then we didn't have a plan moving forward.
However, um, Councilor Villarreal, just. To be clear, an R F P and all of these types of competitive procurements, um other than an uh invitation to bid, which is just whoever gives the highest number, right? You have to pick the highest bid. Um, we definitely did not do that for any of these. Um, and for professional services, we don't generally use an invitation to bid, but you can use it for disposition of land. You you can just get the highest price and according to certain criteria. Um, but all of these other acronyms that we've talked about tonight are just essentially competitive sealed procurements. And and there's, it's, there's really, um, it's a broad category. It includes requests for qualifications. It could include, you could really call it anything as long as you follow the rules. Um, and that's what we did here, which is you set out your process in advance, so everyone knows what it is. They know what the criteria are for selection, um which was the same, the same process used for the the community engagement. Um, I wasn't intimately involved in that particular procurement. Um, but I do understand that our selected vendor in that case did withdraw, and then um the city didn't go with the second place or third place um options. Um, which is always the opportunity for the city to have is if they, to cancel a procurement. So there was not a contemplated role, per se, for the um public engagement consultant in relation to the R F E I specifically. Um, certainly, there could have been concurrent work occurring. But there was. Yeah, so Mayor Weber, Councilor Villarreal, it certainly could have been parallel. Um, but the uh that that activity, um, once the parameters were set for evaluation of of the proposals submitted pursuant to the R F E I, there couldn't, those couldn't change, right? Because you said, they're basically, it's like you post the rules, you make them publicly available, and then you give a certain period of time, because people need to be able to follow those rules. And in this case, it's a massive project, right? So it takes a long time to put together a proposal that meets all those qualifications, putting together these huge teams. We'll see tonight how large this team is, if that ends up being the the decision of the governing body tonight. Um, but putting those massive teams together and trying to fulfill all those criteria for the property takes a long time. And then to to evaluate, and really, there were seven in this case, that all were looking at that same criteria and being able to submit those same types of proposals. We couldn't have, we couldn't have accepted additional criteria during that time period, and the team itself couldn't have been changed during that time period. So there wasn't something to be affected during that process by a community engagement consultant, although they certainly could have been doing parallel work. I totally agree with you there. Um, but they wouldn't have changed, should not have changed, and and under the rules of the proposed um solicitation, they could, they would not have been allowed to change how the outcome was determined.
It possibly could have affected, though, how the different master developers, what they placed in their applications or in their proposals, because the.
Mayor Weber, Councilor Villarreal, they had to, they really had to focus on those midtown criteria.
Right.
Uh, which were publicly available at the very beginning, and that that, they couldn't have changed those. That those could not have changed.
The guidelines.
Right, the guidelines were set. We could not have changed the guidelines. We could not have added to them or subtracted from to them or even um supplemented them. None of those have been permitted.
I agree. At the same time, if public engagement processes were occurring, some of the local partners would be able to to put in aspects that they thought were important into the development um proposal. And I just say that because I think there could have been some um pieces to community wants and desires, also outlined in the guidelines, but more more specifically, that could have influenced or supported the master development proposals. That's how I feel, because they were supposed to be going, public engagement is supposed to happen before the R F E I process was even completed. So I'm just saying the timing was not good and the optics looked bad.
So they happened, I mean, the optics may be different than what actually happened. So I do want to just clarify for um the council that prior to writing the R F E I, um, there was a lot of discussion with community organizations, either one-on-one or in topic-oriented community organization forums. So the community organization forums were divided into topics. I met with a lot of housing organizations in the city, whether they were actually housing developers or or working with issues around housing um in 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 Santa Fe. Um, arts and culture, there was a separate meeting and follow-ups with individuals and with organizations. Uh, technology um in Santa Fe, um and new business um uh incubators. Um, so anyway, that that were divided over a period of time, so I was getting information about what they were hearing from the constituents they worked with. Um, the other one was, is that I met with all of you also, and I met with developers to understand what would make this R F E I or the solicitation competitive, to increase the chance that more and more people would respond, so that we had a broad spectrum of ideas walking through that door. That's, I spent a lot of time meeting with a lot of community organizations to do that. So there was a lot of information that went in it. And if you look at the very beginning of of the R F E I, there's a huge section that covers three critical areas of concern that I heard throughout, whether it was reading newspaper articles, hearing from community organizations, talking to individuals. It was equity. They wanted to make sure that there was job creation, job access, affordability in housing, um and a lot of other things. So equity is a core piece of it. Environmental, there was a lot of groups that talked about, we want to see one of the most sustainable projects in the country. How do we get there? So there's a huge piece on sustainability. Um, and then also on economy. Where is the city right now and where do they want to be? What are the public, public policy goals around economics? So all of those, if you look, and also equitable economic development. So in the very beginning of the R F E I, and to which the developers were directed to respond and read, um, I provided a ton of resources, national resources, what is local groups, who had written manifestos or different types of documents, so that they had an understanding about what the types of things we wanted to see. We didn't want to be prescriptive. We wanted to encourage aspirational ideas and approaches, um, so that we were able to sort of see whether people really absorbed it and 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 whether those ideas resonated with them. So again, if you look at the R F E I, those main elements that were iterated initially in the midtown planning guidelines, but again, through these um discussions I had with different community organizations, and then finally, they ended up in the R F E I. Um, and I I think that's, that's where we are today again, um, that we wanted to find a master developer that actually, that those types of issues um resonated with them as well.
Well, I did see those resources, and I thought they were very helpful. We wouldn't know if the um groups looked at those, per se. I mean, if I look at the at the one at hand right now with K D C, they didn't really mention equity in a way that was, I think, really looking about about anti-displacement strategies or affordability or accessible development. It didn't really frame it that way. So I'm hoping that in this next iteration, this yet next iteration of community engagement, that they will look closely at those and look at those resources that you provided, because there were some good resources that you had cited um in the R F E I proposal. So, yeah, with that, I guess, just some comments. I don't have any other questions about E N A, but, you know, overall, there were, are going to be pros and cons. And with this particular proposal, you know, there were elements that I I appreciated about um K D C and, you know, some of the things they talked about that incorporated traditional place-based development, um, some character aspects, as well as new components and concepts. I'd like that they talked a lot about connectivity goals and concepts, as did some of the other proposals. I think what makes this work is just that there were some really strong local partners. And that's the only thing that's making me feel a little bit less stressed or less um concerned about this process, is that there's local partners that I know will have a lot to contribute. And one thing I do want to mention is, now that we're in this economic crisis, there may be local partners, and that's why I was asking about it earlier. There may be local partners that will be affected by the economic crisis. I mean, some in the, that have been part of the team have already made layoffs to some of their employees. And so these things give me pause and concern, um, because I want to make sure that we have a strong local team. The fact that there's not much diversity on the master developer team worries me. Again, there's no mentions about anti-displacement strategies, which I think is extremely important in the, in the community that we live, um, and understanding of our history here, our heritage, how displacement and gentrification has been part of our history, even currently. And so I really wanted to understand better about how they would approach that. And what I was struck struck by is, they highlighted a lot of projects that were focused on development, um, large development, um, with repeat clients that were mostly large corporations. And so I have a hard time with that, because I want to understand how large development then translates into local community projects that are place-based, and how that will be focused on the scale for our city. So that being said, I really want them to understand this piece about integrated, you know, our diverse socioeconomic community, what that looks like. And so it's hard for me to only see examples of really large developments. So with that, I've had a hard time with this whole process, and I appreciate you all answering my questions, and I'll yield the video for now.
The video floor. Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, the next hand I see belongs to Councilor Abeta. You have the video floor.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Can, can I go back? Um, what is it that we're actually voting on tonight?
Mayor Weber, uh, Councilor Abeta, we're, we're voting on the um exclusive negotiation agreement, um, which allows negotiations to to really start um with the recommended master developer by the evaluation committee, who evaluated the seven master developers who applied to be considered by the city, um, based on the city's request for expressions of interest.
Okay, so we can still choose between now and the end of the period that we don't want this master developer, or are we committing to the master developer this evening?
Mayor Weber, Councilor Abeta, you are only committing to a negotiation period to negotiate in good faith, um, but either party can withdraw after six months if they find that there there's no likelihood of coming to a agreement on both sides of a development and dis disposition and development agreement.
Okay, and as part of the negotiations, can we, can we put in directives or or some kinds of agreements or tell them what we want as far as community engagement goes?
Mayor Weber, Councilor uh Abeta, in uh Schedule C of the agreement, there is required public engagement. Um, and then the city will be, I think, in parallel and with this community group that Daniel's been describing, be working with the developer. So at times, the developer might be doing independent work. They might be working with the city. Um, it can happen in various levels. So they are required to, right away, start meeting with city staff, but then also community members, start understanding the interests on the ground of the community.
Okay, and it, so if we're not satisfied at any point with what's taking place as far as community engagement goes, that could be a basis to to terminate the agreement.
Mayor Weber, Councilor Abeta, if we've given them notice and they get the opportunity to cure, to be able to correct that situation, so there is a default cure provision in the agreement. It gives us the opportunity to alert them that we think they're not following the terms and that they're not following through with their good faith um actions. And then at that point, if it's not corrected, then we could terminate within the first six months. And then later on, if either side feels that it's just not working, then we'd have that opportunity then.
Okay, um, the, by, the rest of, the colleagues that have already spoken have asked a lot of questions I had. But I guess what, uh, maybe Daniel, you can answer this. Is there anything that we've heard tonight that's been asked that we still can't accomplish with this or address as a, as a result of taking this vote tonight? In other words, I'm concerned that if I vote for this, then I've given up some of these things or or these processes that that have been asked by my, by some of my colleagues.
And it sounds as though what you're talking about mainly is the the public engagement and and whether, you know, it's going to move forward as part of the.
Anything, am I committing to this property being sold? Am I committing to being?
No. What you're committing to is to creating a partnership with a developer who has a capacity to implement. And what you're committing to is to creating a development plan with communities and with the developer and with the city interest all in mind. And I think there's probably no one on this call or this meeting tonight that doesn't understand the tensions between that, the inherent tensions in that. But part of what we will do is to just embark on that process. Um, and that's all you're committing to tonight. And we think that the evaluation committee made the right recommendation in their analysis of finding a finalist. Um, and that's the recommendation that they've made to us. And what we're deciding on is entering into an agreement with them um to massage their ideas, massage their approaches, massage their team, who they are, what we want out of them. And let's, you know, and and so that's what we're about to step into in this next chapter.
But this is, but this, but even with this, it's, we are still at the beginning stages. We still have to go through this year process, and then a year later, that's when we really get into the actual yeah, development or or plans and planning for the the property itself.
That's correct. This, this will unfold over this fourteen, uh, this twelve, sixteen month period. Um, and we'll learn more about the site, we'll learn more about them, we'll learn, refine what the community wants. We're just starting now.
So it sounds like we're actually moving slow and.
Well, no one, well, it, what, one day you hear, let's rush, let's get this going. The next day, it's like, no, you're going too fast. So I think we just keep methodically moving forward. Um, I'm excited about the public engagement committee starting so that they can be working with us on parallel tracks with analyzing the site and creating a development plan in unison with the developer.
Uh, at the end of this due diligence period, does there have to be a vote by the council to actually enter into uh an agreement and make this group the official master developer?
Mayor Weber, Councilor Abeta, um, so if if we're talking about like that they're actually going to break ground, there would need to be another agreement, yes. Um, this, this agreement does recognize them as a master developer that the city's working with, so. But in terms of actually putting infrastructure in or something like that, there will have to be additional agreements.
What about actually doing that, even before construction? What about just doing a plan?
Yeah, Councilor Abeta, Mayor Weber, it won't necessarily be an agreement, but the land use code provisions would apply and and certain things. So the, the the midtown, the district has different approval processes than some of the other parts of the city, but certain things would need to come to this governing body, I believe, if a rezoning.
Can they do any of that work in this, in this twelve-month period? Are, is, is any of this going to get approved during this twelve-month period or simultaneously with it? Or do we have to actually go through this process first, and then we get into the other ones?
Mayor Weber, Councilor Abeta, the idea is for a master plan to be developed ideally by the end of the period. But that would require all the steps that are required for any other master plan in this area. Um, and there would probably be a rezoning as well, so that would, we anticipate that'll, that'll be at the very end of the period, if it happens.
Okay.
On that point, uh, can Erin, during my questioning, I mentioned that the development, the disposition and development agreement, which does use language sub, for the transfer of the property, that that has to be done within twelve months. That's, to me, that we're, we will be in this twelve months if this uh agreement gets approved tonight. So it will be simultaneously.
Right, Mayor Weber, Councilor Vialco, Plano, Abeta, the idea is that it would be prepared simultaneously. There might, there may be an extension to the twelve-month period.
Okay, um, let's see what other question I have. Uh, as, as far as the evaluation, did we take into consideration the uh, the financial, the ability of this master developer to to continue to conduct business, given the environment we all find ourselves in with this pandemic that we're, this COVID nineteen and that, did it, do we feel comp, did we ask, you know, financial-related questions? And that, did it, do we feel comp- did we ask, you know, financial related questions?
Mayor Weber, Daniel, you're on mute.
I'll take it and then maybe you can follow. Um, yes, so in the RFI, the evaluation criteria included, um, the financial capacity of the developer. One of the questions we asked at the interview was, you know, what are, what are your perspectives of being able to be economically or financially solvent during downturns, the economic, it, it, economic downturns? What were your experiences in 2008, um, related to the economic downturn? And your ability to continue moving forward with elements of this project during that time? So it was a major consideration for us to make sure that we had a developer that had strong financial capacity, both equity and access to debt, um, to be able to pull, um, these projects together and implement.
Okay, um, uh, those are the questions I have for now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor Romero Worth, you have your digital hand up. Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. I had to find the unmute button.
Gotcha.
Um, so first of all, I want to thank, uh, the staff for the enormous amount of work that has gone into getting us to this moment. And I, I want to say that this is potentially a very exciting night for us. If the council, um, moves forward with this developer, uh, I think, um, i- if we were to vote, uh, to accept this master developer, uh, the next thing that's going to happen is we are going to hear the presentation of why they were unanimously accepted, um, by the evaluating committee. And, um, I think it will be an opportunity for the community to see, what this group, what this team brings to this incredibly complicated uh, and important project for our community. I want to go back. Um, I, I think if, if you, if I were a member of the public, I think I'd be very confused, um, about the process. And in fact, uh, to Counselor Garcia's point, one of the questions on our list of questions that were submitted by the pro- by the public was, please explain the process used to select the front runner. And so to the best of my ability, I'm going to try to explain that from the beginning. And if I, you know, go off track, I hope Daniel or, or, or Erin will, will help, uh, you know, say, no, it wasn't exactly like that, it was like this. But, and I'm going to try to do it succinctly and I'm going to try, I'm, I'm going to try to bring some, some of these words we've been throwing in around, um, like RFEIs and disposition and development agreements and all these things. So let's just take it from the top. So, uh, we started with a community outreach process. That process, uh, was done under, uh, forgetting his name, Brown, um, Matt Brown, thank you. I think he led that, um, and he's no longer at the city. There were some other city players that participated in that. And through those community outreach meetings, uh, we came out with something called the Midtown Planning Guidelines. And basically what those were are the things that the community said they wanted to see in the midtown property as we develop it. And they were things like affordable housing. They were things like sustainability. They were things like, um, we want to see education, uh, component on that property. Uh, and there was, there's a list. And, and, and not all of these are public documents. If you want to dig in, we can, you know, put them in a place. I, well, actually, I think they're on a place, they're on the, the Midtown website, right? So those planning guidelines were then what, when we went out with this request for an expression of interest, this RFEI that's been referred to, we, we, the city went out and we said, hey, we've got this great piece of land and this is what the community has said they want to put on it. And we said, hey, come tell us what you would do with this land, um, if, if you had the opportunity to be our master developer. And, and let me just back up real quickly. I think what the process overall that has gotten us to this moment was, as the mayor said, to objectively and procession- professionally assess who would be our best partner in figuring out how to move forward with developing that property. So those, so we put out this request for expression of interest. We said, please tell us your ideas. And we had an evaluating committee of, of internal staff people who evaluated all the proposals that met the criteria. So you couldn't just, like, I, if I had been a, a, a member of the public and I had applied to do this, I, as a person, would not have qualified. I don't have the capabilities. I don't have the professional background. I don't bring the financial wherewithal. I, I couldn't have done this, but there are people out there. And in fact, we have people who are very patiently sitting here waiting to be heard if we approve them, uh, to be our master developer. So these, so a range of people applied. I think we, as a council, uh, were able to see seven of the proposals. Um, and, and those are, we've talked about, the only one will be made public tonight if we approve. And that's, and that's the, the, the folks that are, that are on camera waiting to be heard. Uh, we, the council, were able to see seven different proposals in detail. Everything, the seven different master developers told us they would do with the property. We had access to that as council members. Um, and, and we had executive sessions where we were able to review that. We also had, um, access to the scoring sheets of it, just like any other procurement process that we do every day in, in our committee work. We had access to the scoring sheets that said, okay, this is, here, here's the list of criteria by which all of these proposals were judged. And here is how the evaluating committee ranked them. And here's their final score. This master developer that's before you tonight was the highest ranking scorer on that list of criteria that was, uh, developed from their propos- from, well, that was developed, um, the cri- the criteria were developed ahead of time so that we could, so the evaluating committee could objectively, um, evaluate the, the proposals. And this, this developer who's here tonight was, was the win- one, was the winner. Or as, or as the, the public question asks, who, who was, who was the front runner? This is our front runner. So if we go forward, if we vote tonight to have the master developer, this, we have na- we now have a partner. And that partner, under this thing called the Exclusive Negotiation Agreement, that we are going, that we would approve tonight, making them our partner to develop the Midtown Campus, they would go forward and it explicitly tell, says what they need to do in terms of community engagement. So let me just draw your attention to, as the city attorney has said, it is Exhibit C in, in, in the, in the agreement with the developer. And I just, let me get to that page. It says, ongoing public engagement. I'm, I'm going to read this. It says, engage with the public to gather input on components of the conceptual plan and development framework to balance community development, community enrichment, and financial goals. That's goal one. Coordinate with and participate in the public engagement plan to be developed with the city's public engagement consulting team. Now that, as was in a memo from Rich Brown, we, and I, and I understand from, from Daniel, we have engaged with UNM School of Architecture and Planning and Designing Planning Assistance Center, Center in partnership with community organizations to contact the, we're going to develop and implement and manage a citywide public engagement plan. So we have a partner to help with the engagement plan. And that's, that's written out in this agreement between us, the city, and the, uh, the master developer. The third thing in public engagement, collaborate with the Community Development Committee in vetting and establishing community development and public policy objectives for implementation, which will be incorporated into this thing, this, this thing we've talked about is the DDA, which is the Disposition and Development Agreement. That's the thing, over the next twelve to sixteen months, we are going to be working with the master developer, with our staff, with the public to, to figure out exactly what it is that's going to be on that property and whether we're going to be selling portions of it, whether we be leasing portions of it, whether some of it we will keep as community space. So all of that is coming. Uh, going back to public engagement, develop monthly briefs summarizing E&amp;A tasks and activities for communications purposes to city council, the mayor, the Midtown District Committees. Briefs may be posted on the city and project websites. Specifically, it says, we are going to communicate what's going on with the council and with the community. Uh, next, branding and marketing. Master developer to coordinate with Midtown Steering Committee and Public Engagement Committee to develop a branding and marketing plan for the Midtown District that is consistent with a public vision. So, public, we are going to be knocking on your door. And yes, this has been, this is going to be harder because of this COVID crisis, because we can't come together in community centers, because we can't have you come down to City Hall. And, you know, we're going to have to be creative about how, you know, we engage with people. Maybe it's one-on-one, maybe it's with surveys. Maybe we'll get to a period of time where we can all come together. But we, in this agreement that we are voting on tonight, we have outlined public engagement for how we will go forward developing this site. This is all coming. Uh, and we have done it in the planning guidelines that led us to this moment. So I, um, let's see, now that I've finished the process, let me just see if there was something else. Uh, I want to also say that we know from the exhibit in the agreement that there are different levels of partners with this master developer. We have national partners, we have regional partners, we have local partners. With the task at hand, we need all those levels of people and, and, and organizations and businesses to help us. This is a massive undertaking that's going to take years, uh, to come to fruition. And we, we need the local input from the community at large. We also need it from, um, the folks that will, uh, just lost my train of thought. Um, yeah. Lost my train of thought. But anyway, we're going to need lots of public engagement to inf- to, to inform on this. We are also going to need financial backing. Uh, you know, the city can't do this alone. We can't hold on to this property alone. It's costing us too much money. So we are going to need, you know, people who have financial wherewithal, businesses with financial wherewithals, who will give us and help us with the financing of doing the development that's needed in the community. Um, so let me just see, if there's anything else I wanted to say about this. I think that was pretty much it. But I want to just say that, um, I hope we can get to a vote soon, um, because I would like to hear, assuming that we can, we can, that we agree, the governing body agrees to partner uh, with the folks that have been selected unanimously by the evaluating committee through an objective process. Uh, do we need to do more community engagement? Absolutely we do, we will be, it's in the agreement. We all have said it tonight, it has to happen. Uh, this is a community space and we want, we all want, uh, to work with the surrounding neighborhoods. We want to work with this, with the businesses of this community. We want to work with the people of this community to build something that we can all be proud of. It's an exciting time. The partners are exciting. I really hope that we will vote this up and that we will get to, um, the, the moment where we can hear from, from our new partner in, in doing what is a very important project in this community. And I know it's been complicated. Part of the reason I think it's been complicated is we're a fairly small city. We haven't done a lot of this stuff. Um, we haven't had opportunities to do a lot of this kind of development. We're not a San Francisco, we're not a Denver. We're not these bigger communities that see this stuff. I can tell you that through Daniel Hernández's work, we have, uh, had the benefit of his national expertise uh, and, and using the models that other cities have used uh, to, to bring these kinds of developments to fruition. And, and, uh, I think, uh, you know, I don't know, Daniel, if you want to talk about any, about how that process, how, how we've used other cities to, to, to model what's been happening here. But, um, I think part of the reason it's hard for us here, and I hope the developer will hang in there with us, is that we just don't have properties like this. These are, as, as the mayor says, often once-in-a-lifetime kinds of things for communities like ours. We're trying to do it right. Uh, I appreciate the questions of my colleagues because I know we all want to do it right. And I just want to say, I, I, we are trying, we're going to do better on the public engagement part that, um, you know, has, has, could have been happening to, to Counselor Vialle's point, simultaneously with the, the evaluation of, of the proposals. But there's whole much more public engagement going forward. So, uh, without belaboring the points anymore, I yield the floor.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel, Counselor Lindell, you have your hand up and you haven't had a chance yet.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thanks to everybody for being here tonight. Um, all the participants, people from the public that submitted questions. Um, Counselor Romero Worth, I wish I'd have said that. I, I, I'm sorry I have to follow you. But, uh, the truth of the matter is, is that I appreciate that you went through that process so very thoroughly. Um, I know we have so many questions. I have lots of questions about this project too. Um, all of those questions that came in from the public. Um, tons of questions like that. Um, I just want to be clear though, that as counselors, we have had access to all the, uh, master development plans. And we've had access to them for weeks. Um, we've had the ability to go in and take a look at all of them. And, um, the top three in addition to the other four that weren't the top three. So, um, you know, the, that was a timely pro- a, 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 a time-consuming process. But I learned a lot from it, seeing what all different groups wanted to do. And, um, I, I think that it's really, really important that we understand what we're doing here tonight. Um, we're entering into a negotiation to see if we can make this work. Um, all of these questions, we all have them. But it's like trying to find out the game score before the first pitch has been thrown. Um, we, we don't even know exactly who we're playing yet or where the field is. And we want the, the end score. It doesn't happen that way. It's a long process. I, I keep hearing people ask, and I see in the questions, who's going to own the property? We don't know who's going to own the property. That's part of a negotiation. Do we end up owning the property? Is that what we think is the best thing? Well, I don't know. Somebody else owned part of it, somebody else owned a lot of it? We don't know. That's what this negotiation is about. To find the best path forward for the city of Santa Fe on what is a spectacular property. And I have a lot of confidence in this council, the other people that are sitting in this meeting. It's going to be a huge amount of work. The world has changed dramatically just in the last six weeks. It'll probably change how this process goes. I think it's really important to keep our finger on the pulse of how this happens. This pandemic doesn't go on forever, but we have witnessed in the last six weeks pretty much a worldwide economic meltdown. And, um, that'll be a part of this negotiation, uh, that personally I pay a lot of attention to. Can, can we do what we say we're going to do? And can our partners do what they say they're going to do? And can our partners do what they say they're going to do when it comes to the finances of this project? So, I don't know a game score. Um, I know we're having a game. And I think the sooner we get going on it, the better. And it's impossible for me to not mention that at midnight every night, that property costs us between six and eight thousand dollars a day. Clock strikes midnight, six or eight thousand. It's a lot of money, folks. Um, you know, please make this go as quickly as possible. When I hear people say, no, I can't meet this week, I want to wait until next week to meet. Well, that's seven days, how much did that cost us because we couldn't meet this week? Please, let's work on this as hard as we can. Um, it costs us money every day and puts off other projects that we would like to be pursuing with those monies. And, um, in this day and age, debts that we owe. So, thank you, Mayor, for letting me speak. Um, thank you to my colleagues and everyone else that's in this meeting or listening to it. It's, it's a very important project to Santa Fe. And I know that we are, uh, committed to delivering the very, very best that we can.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, the next, uh, hand I see belongs to, uh, Councilwoman Cassidy Sanchez.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I, and I really wanted to thank my colleagues. Um, I wanted to circle back, um, after this, this discussion that I think has been a really important discussion. Um, for a couple of things that I'm really hearing. And one thing that I'm really hearing is that at this point, the council and as representatives of our districts, really has an opportunity to start to shape this thing. And I think that that's a really important process. And, and I, you know, I think that Counselor Romero-Worth and Counselor Lindell already really, um, put this home is that right now, at this point, we start to really start to shape these things. And there are a ton of wonderful questions coming in. Um, the other piece that I really want to make sure, uh, happens is we've talked so much about community engagement and what we need to do on our side. And I also want to put it out to the public that we will be knocking on your doors, not really because social distancing, but we will be, we'll be reaching out to you. Um, and I really want to challenge you and make sure that you are engaged in this process. We know that this is going to be really imperfect. We are, we are going to make mistakes in the public engagement process. And, um, it will be crucial that we hear from you about those mistakes. And so in the interest of, of that piece, I heard from a constituent, I got a text from a constituent right now, there, or about an hour ago, um, that told me that they just received the notice about this public meeting this afternoon in today's mail. And I really want to thank that constituent for letting me know that because that means that we know that we need to get things out a little bit earlier. And that is crucial for us to know these pieces. So whenever something isn't working for the, the engagement piece, when you feel like we're not reaching out to you or the way that we're reaching out to you is not going to work for you, um, I really want to challenge my constituents to be reaching out to me uh, because this is too important to, to let things slide. So, um, I really want to thank everybody for this discussion. Um, I think that Counselor Romero-Worth is correct, that this is a moment that can be really exciting, that we get to move forward with such a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity if the council so chooses. But also that the council now gets to take on that responsibility of how do we best represent our districts? How do we best represent our constituents? How do we make sure that we are, um, expressing their needs as we move forward here? And also to Counselor Villarreal's point about things such as displacement, um, I want to challenge us as a council that there are going to be some policy pieces that the developer will not be able to address, that we need to be looking at at the same time. And so I think that it's an exciting opportunity for us to, um, really move forward with some of those pieces that we know are crucial for, for the future of Santa Fe. Um, and this will shine the light on them in a way that, um, perhaps hasn't been shined on as much. So, thank you very much, everybody, for the discussion.
Thank you. Uh, you know, Counselor Rivera, you, I started for second rounds before I served you a first helping. Uh, do you have a, a question, comment, or, uh, you'd like to make some observations before we go for second rounds for people who have spoken once already?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I had the same concerns as the other counselors about public engagement and how we're, uh, going to engage all, uh, the interested parties, uh, at Midtown Campus. And I think Counselor Romero-Worth, uh, summed it up nicely. So, really, the process starts after tonight and, uh, I just want everyone to know that their voices will be heard, their input will be taken, and that's all part of what's coming up next. So, uh, thank you for, uh, allowing me that brief comment, but I think everything else has been said, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, in that case, uh, Counselor Garcia, it's your turn again.
Sorry, Mayor, I'm trying to get myself off mute. Um, and then, you know, I guess my point, and I hate to keep beating a dead horse, but I think the developers understand how critical community engagement is, how important this piece of property is to Santa Fe. And what happens there, the public really wants to be engaged in that. I, I think as we move forward, I have full faith and confidence in our community that we are going to show up. So please, community members, don't let us down. We're here fighting for you guys to, to be engaged and be involved. So I know that we are going to be in, in some interesting times, you know? We, we've got to be creative in regards to how we engage you. So, so please, 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 please understand that we want you involved. We're here fighting for your guys', your, your opinions to be heard and, and your mark to be put on this plan. Um, I feel, as I mentioned earlier, I, I was going to go over the questions and I feel there was one question that was, is really germane, and please tell me if it, if I can ask it. Um, and this was posed to the developers in regards to, what are your thoughts around community engagement? You, you, you see how important it is to us. You see how the ball was dropped in the past. I know Counselor Romero-Worth said that, that, uh, it was part of the process. Well, I, I think folks would beg to differ. There, there was not, that that ball was dropped. So, with that, can we ask a question to the developers in regards to how are they going to pick up that ball and slam dunk it? Because they are signees of this agreement. And I think it's critical that we hear from them how we are, you know, to, to use Counselor Lindell's sports reference, how are we going to throw them an alley-oop and then have them slam dunk the community engagement piece?
Um, can I, I'm going to start and then I, I'm, I, we're going to hear from the developer and there's a series of questions that they'll be responding to earlier. But, um, before they, if, if that's what we want to do, allow them to speak now, I, I, I just want to sort of jump in real quick.
I think we need to check with the city attorney on that.
Okay, good.
Volunteering.
Isn't that the developer yet, right?
That's right.
Mayor Weber, uh, Counselor Garcia. So I think Daniel and maybe Counselor Romero-Worth actually read from the scope of work regarding community engagement. So those would be the requirements for community engagement under this agreement. So to the extent that, um, that relates to this agreement, we can certainly go back to those sections. Um, but, um, it would be really interesting, I think, to ask that question if we do enter this agreement. Um, because that might give you a more detailed understanding of how they interpret the contract. Um, but beyond the words of the contract itself, what they would say right now is not part of the contract. Um, so it may be misleading and a little bit preemptive at this point. Um, but we've, I think we read that section and Daniel might want to point to the sections or that, that Counselor Romero-Worth had, had just read from about, about the ongoing community engagement that is required. Um.
Yeah, I mean, i- if I can, and, and, and I, I want to hear from the developer on this question when we get to that moment in the, in the agenda after the vote. Um, but, uh, one of the things we wanted to make sure happened is a result of a lot of the conversations I had with community organizations and people were actually focused a lot on successful public engagement process and how to define that. One of the starting points is, how does, you know, every entity, the public, the city and the developer have a role in the public engagement process? So no one should have it completely on their back to think that I'm, I have to carry the full load of public engagement. But an agreement has to be had from the very beginning, and that's what we have with this developer, and we'll hear more about it. But an agreement that we are going to participate in the development of the public engagement process and its implementation. Want to be sure that we're driving down the, the right lane and heading in the same direction. So, and again, we don't want to run at cross purposes, and we don't want to be redundant. But we want to be, we want to participate in, again, the creation of an engagement plan and also in its implementation. So they're ready to go. Um, and, um, and so anyway, they'll talk a little bit more about what their initial steps are that they want to do. Um, but again, we want to make sure that we have a really robust public engagement plan that they can participate in.
So, so, but, but I guess my question was answered, so there's nothing prohibiting them from, uh, the developers answering this question. And to, to kind of round out, my question is, you know, given, given the seriousness that our community feels that they had a lack of input in the process, the community engagement process thus far has been lacking. What is their history? How strong is their history? How successful, unsuccessful have they been in engaging the community?
I don't think you're, uh, if I interpreted the city attorney's answer correctly, uh, it differed from your interpretation, which was the, uh, we don't have an, an agreement with this party yet. And we are not engaged in a, uh, a, in, uh, this is not a public, uh, inquiry or in, uh, interview with the developer. Although that was an opportunity that was available to you and all of us in an executive session. But before we can direct questions to this potential partner, we have to establish that we, they are our partner. Otherwise, we won't be following our own process.
To add to that, Mayor Weber, Counselor Garcia, um, so questions about the developer's history were included in the, in the request for expressions of interest. And they did respond in their proposal, which all the counselors have had access to. If they didn't respond to it adequately there, that's, that's basically where the inquiry has to end right now. Um, because additional criteria can't be applied at this point. So the criteria that were applied to find this developer as the highly ranked of the seven have already been applied. So layering on new criteria now is not allowed.
But I think the point that you're driving for, Counselor Garcia, is you want to hear from the developer from their own mouths, what their, uh, commitment to public engagement looks like, sounds like, what the experience is. I have my own list of questions that I produced for tonight, and, uh, that is absolutely on the list. But it's premature to ask the question if we don't have a partnership agreement with this developer. If we have a partnership agreement, then we can begin to pepper them with positive questions, challenges, opportunities to display past experiences. But at the moment, we are basing it on the, uh, recommendation of the, uh, the committee to whom was entrusted the job of evaluating the different proposals.
Okay. Um, I will yield the floor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, second helping for Councilwoman V. Hill Coppler, you're, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um. About, I guess I have three, three things. Uh, I appreciate Counselor Romero-Worth's comments on the, the process and, and, and all, everything that she said. Uh, I do want to say though, that the, we can't forget that the public really was not involved as much as they wanted to. And I know we are going to question or engage the public after this. But at this point, we're, we're, we have to think about how the public feels, I think. And based on the emails that we've all received, some more than others, I know I've gotten a, a lot. Um, they don't really know what's going on. In fact, what we have before us tonight already does include, uh, the, the ideas and the vision and what will go where. And you can tell from the partners, you can tell from who's in this room tonight. Uh, I don't know how many people the public can see here, but if you take a look around, it's not, it's not really a secret who's involved. So take a look at these people here, and that's who, who you see, Madam and Mr. Public. Uh, that's, that's who's here. That's who's going to be and who has already offered up ideas for what's going to happen at Midtown. So that, these are some clues. Uh, and, and I'm not saying they're bad at all, please don't misunderstand me. But I think that the horse is already out of the barn because we are going to give the public opportunity to comment and engage. But this vision has already been decided by, fairly decided by the group. And, and I'm not saying that's bad either, but you can understand the frustration that the public has had. And so, you know, yes, we are promising to engage. Uh, but there's another level of engagement on top of engagement that hasn't really happened. And, and I will still, uh, go back and say that there's many people in our community, disadvantaged people, non-English speaking people who have not been a part of this. During this process, two public engagement companies are gone, do, done. We haven't really had the public engagement. In fact, when I questioned, uh, our consultant on this, yes. Admittedly, we have missed public engagement deadlines that were on our sheets, and that was public information. So let's not misunderstand why it's important for somebody to say, we need to recognize this. And, and I'm happy that we're going to engage in the future and all that. But I don't, I don't want the public to come back and say, oh, well, you already decided this. And, and maybe somewhat we did, I, I'm not sure. So I want to get back to a comment. Oh, and the other thing I want the public to know, we did not get these proposals until March, like late March. And it's a lot of data. And so I don't want the public to misunderstand that we had all this information all along. Because when I first started my comments, I said, we have not been privy to much of what the public has, has not been privy to. And so that is when we started to get involved because it was all confidential. So I wanted to make that point. The next thing is, I know, uh, Counselor Romero-Worth mentioned something about, um, you know, we don't know if this property is for sale or, or whatever, and I, I agree with that. But I want to go back to what our city attorney said when she answered my question. And I asked if, you know, granted, some of these parcels at Midtown will be sold based on what, whatever happens, no decisions yet, but that's in, that's in, that's part of the whole, uh, circle of ideas here. And my question to the city attorney was, if we lease some of those parcels, who will own the leases? And she said, the developer. So we would be selling parts of the, this Midtown property for whatever is decided. And secondly, we will be leasing potentially some of these parcels at Midtown. And so again, my question was, who will own the leases? And it's the developer, so.
Mayor Weber, Counselor V. Hill Coppler, it will, it will depend, it will depend on what the lease is.
Of course. But it, it is clear to me, the city will be, hopefully, as to Counselor Lindell's point, able to pay off the debt. And then boom, we'll have a piece of property in this city that hopefully everybody in the end will like and be happy with it. Uh, so those are just some things I wanted to clear up. And I do want to give notice that there are two amendments I would like to introduce to this, uh, agreement. I don't think they're huge, you heard me mention them earlier. And I, I'm not sure when the appropriate time, Mayor, would be to do that.
I think you have to address, or we have to refer that to the city attorney in terms of whether this is amendable as a, uh, contract, uh, in, at the moment. And if so, what form that would take, or if they're, one of your, one of your, if I'm, well, I'm not a mind reader, but you did mention earlier that you wanted to make sure that the 30-day reports were, uh, absolute. absolutely available or delivered to members of the governing body. I don't know if that's one of your amendments or not.
Yes, and I have that language. And the other one would be that extension, extensions to this contract would be, would rest with the city council and not the city manager. Those are my two. So I'm not introducing them now, but I guess, Mayor, you wanted an opinion from the city attorney.
Well, I wanted to get some guidance on how to proceed for sure.
Yeah, Mayor Weber, Councilor V. Hill Coppler, that, that type of amendment would, would not require negotiation with the developer because it would really reside on the city's. Well, I guess they, that is a term. So I mean, the developer would have to be agreeable on the, the extension part. I don't know how much they relied on that or not in agreeing to these terms. It seems like it's more of a city action, but we could ask them if they were agreeable to that. But those are the only types of amendments we could make would be ones that are agreeable to the developer as well.
And, and both of these, if I might add, are just giving the city council miniscule more say so in what is being negotiated here.
Well, the first one, if I read the, if I listen carefully to what Councilwoman Romero Worth read to us, is already covered in the, as a stipulation in the current agreement, that those, all of the, all of the briefs are public information and will be delivered to, not only to the governing body, but to the public.
Councilor V. Hill Coppler, I think that was from the next steps memo from, from Daniel. So that's certainly the intent. And that is what Daniel has communicated with the governing body, but I don't think it's a term in the agreement.
Okay.
My amendments are strictly within the body of the agreement.
Okay. So how would we proceed, City Attorney?
Mayor Weber, I guess if there's deliberation that's completed and we're ready for motions, then someone can make a motion to either accept the contract as proposed or with.
I see. Okay. Thank you. So we don't have a motion on the floor, so it's premature at the moment to even consider where we would go.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And just a point of clarification. So if there were amendments, would we vote on the amendments first and then the overall E and A second? How does that work procedurally?
Mayor Weber, Councilor V. Hill, or V. Ariel. If there's an amendment, if there's a, a motion on the floor to accept the contract, then in order to amend the contract, you would need to amend the motion. If the motion on the floor is to accept the contract with amendments, then we would vote directly on that, but we would need to clarify what those amendments are and whether or not the developer were to support them.
Okay. I see Councilman Abada's hand is up. Councilor Abada.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make sure to go on the record that I, I am committed to ensure, ensuring that community groups have a meaningful voice at the table. Specifically, in this neighborhood, we have chainbreakers who represents a lot of residents. On the south side, we've got earth care that represents a lot of, to get to Councilor V. Hill Coppler's point, Spanish speaking residents that don't speak English. So I, I'm committed and I, I would expect that they have a meaningful voice at the table as this process moves forward. I am hoping that my vote in the affirmative, deny allows for more transparency, accountability and communication with the public on the process as we move forward. I'm also willing and able to take measures to course correct, including termination of this agreement with the developer. They don't live up to the standards of the community. I think it's important that no plans for development move forward until there is meaningful community engagement that meets due diligence and authentically represents the values, needs and wants of the people who are going to be most impacted. So I, again, Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to be sure that I'm clear as to where I stand. And I think the, the most important piece to me anyways with this is going to be community engagement. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other comments at this moment about the E and A? Is there a motion?
Move to approve is written.
There's a motion to approve that is written. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion to approve the contract, the E and A as it has been presented to us, and there's I hear a second from Councilor Linda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to amend the contract. And according to your answer to Renee, this would happen after a motion.
Mayor Weber, Councilor V. Hill Coppler, you could move to amend the main motion. And it would require a second and a vote.
Okay, I would like to amend the main motion.
You amend the main motion.
But you have to state a specific thing, don't you, City Attorney?
So we need, we need to know what the amendment would be.
Okay, on page four, number two point three, the second to the last line, I would strike the city manager acting on behalf of the city. And I would add, I would insert, the city council shall have the right to extend the initial term. That would be my amendment one, and I have another one.
City Attorney? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
If we could take these one at a time, I think that would be helpful.
Mayor, yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Yep.
Okay, so that's the, I, the first amendment as proposed by Councilor V. Hill Coppler is to, let me summarize it without using your exact language, is essentially that rather than having the power or the authority to extend the contract, sit with the city manager, it would sit with the, I assume the governing body. Although you said city council.
Yeah, okay, so, so I think you have the synopsis correct, but I believe I need specific language to amend. So I would strike on item two point three, the second to the last line at the end, I would strike the city manager acting on behalf of the city and the comma, and I would insert, the governing body shall have the right to extend the initial term. So if my, did I get a second on that? If they want a friendly second?
I'll second.
Right, there's a, there's an amendment proposed and a second. If I, if I understand that correctly, and I'm pretty sure that the, the record will show exactly what and where you were proposing to put that.
Mr. Mayor, can we have discussion on the motion?
Yes, Councilwoman.
So can somebody please address, maybe it's the city attorney, why we might want the city manager instead of the governing body to have that authority? What, what, what are the pros and cons of where you place that authority?
Mayor, Councilor Romero Worth. Primarily, it would allow for flexibility given scheduling. So if we were to be approaching that deadline and need more flexibility for approval of an extension, I mean, it would allow for that flexibility. It would not change the overall sixteen month absolute length of the, of the agreement. The governing body would have to change that. So it's just, if it's very important to the council to retain that authority, then you should keep it. And if it's not, then you delegate it.
So may I comment on your answer? And that is that this extension is like one, adding one third more to the initial term, one third more time. And I think that's, that should be the purview of the city council, especially after we get reports. And it also lends itself to, I think, Counselor Garcia's and maybe Councilor Abada's commentary where, you know, what do we do to terminate this contract? Well, I think the city council has to be more involved, is why I'm introducing this amendment.
I see a hand from Counselor Cassidy Sanchez.
Um, yes, I just wasn't clear on whether or not the developer would need to approve of this at this time. City Attorney, can you let us know if we pass this amendment, does this, what does this do for the actions that are being taken tonight? Is this no longer a signed contract by our developer? Is it something that, you know, we can check in with them at the moment?
Mayor Weber, Counselor Cassidy Sanchez, I think that's right. There's no guarantee that the developer has to accept this amendment. So I do think, is there someone on the developer team who can speak this particular issue?
They're shaking their head no.
So they don't have the signatory with them tonight, or someone who can make that decision? So we would be getting, so that if we don't have a, a settled contract, then I'm not sure we can move on in the agenda.
Mayor?
Councilwoman.
So with that in mind, I, I'm not sure that this is something we want to be doing. I mean, I, I'm all for making sure that the governing body has the power it should have. But the contract is for a maximum of sixteen months. Am I correct?
Well.
City, City Attorney?
Mayor, Mayor Weber, Councilor Romero Worth, yes. With the extension, it would be sixteen months. Something that, something that you might want to consider, Mayor Weber, councilors, is if any requirements you have are about city actions, such as whether or not the city manager will extend a contract or whether or not reports will be provided to you, you have the power to write a resolution and require that.
Yeah, that can be an internal agreement amongst ourselves as opposed to something we put into a contract with a second party, as I understand.
Mayor?
However, that's correct.
Then, then that, you can expect that will be a resolution I will put forward. So, thank you.
Okay, if that helps resolve the issue, I think that's a very amicable way to go. So would it be conceivable to?
I think she has to formally withdraw the amendment.
Would that be something you'd be willing to do, Councilwoman V. Hill Coppler, to withdraw this?
Can I speak before she withdraws her motion?
Okay, never mind. Counselor Garcia, I'm.
I didn't see your hand, Counselor Garcia.
I, I, I think it behooves us to, to vote on this. I mean, this, this contract is coming before us. And should the contract be extended, it should come before us again. I think for it to reside in the governing body helps to provide more context in the sense, I, I, I've never, I, I don't think we'll be in the, in the instance where we need to quickly extend this, should we need to extend it. We will, we will see it coming down the road if we need to extend it. So the argument is that it'll allow us to act expediently. It doesn't suffice for me. I think we can put it on any council agenda in the future, should we need to extend it. I, I, I think by not allowing the council the authority to extend it, should we deem it, and, and it, it, to me, then what's the point of us signing this agreement today?
Well, I think the question is twofold. One is, first of all, the, the council is saying in this by play that there needs to be a consideration internally among our own selves about how such an extension would be done. And Councilor V. Hill Coppler is recommending that we take it up as a resolution or a procedural measure between us and, and not involve our potential partner. Because really, it's more our, our matter than it is their matter, and we can decide that among ourselves without preventing this contract from being voted on tonight.
But it's part of the contract language, so even though it's in the contract.
Mayor Weber, Counselor Garcia, you, you have the authority to write a resolution and govern the conduct of the city manager through a resolution. So you could do it outside the contract. Our partner does not have the capability of amending the contract tonight, so the, the whole presentation will, will not happen if we try to amend the contract because we will not have a contract at that point.
So what we are, it's either vote up or down, like we were the other night.
Well, with the proviso, if I understand the city attorney's commentary of items, the two items that you've brought up are particular to our internal way of doing business. And we, you will be in a position to bring forward your concerns as a resolution that we would then consider as the governing body, but not have it be part of our deliberation tonight. So it's a, it could be, apparently, the city attorney's advice is to take it as a almost a sidebar matter amongst ourselves, rather than having the entire vote tonight be stymied by our inability to have a further negotiation in public with our potential partner. So it's, it's, it is the contract we have, but it is subject to internal sidebar operating changes on our own subsequently.
So, so I guess my question back to, to Aaron's point of clarification earlier of, of if we, let's say we didn't include this change, and let's hypothetically say we didn't even vote on to approve this, or, or let's say we did, I mean, but I thought we were given the authority to move forward with the committee's recommendation to move forward them as a master to developer, and then we can continue to negotiate the contract. We're, we're moving forward with the committee's recommendation, which means.
Mayor Weber, Counselor Garcia, what is on the agenda is the exclusive negotiation agreement, because that is what the next step contemplated in the selection process was. So in order to select them, we need to enter an exclusive negotiation agreement. Otherwise, they're not selected.
Yeah, the, the item on the agenda that was noted was the E and A. And our decision to go into this relationship, in effect, have a contract with them through the E and A or alternatively not. And what we're now in a position to consider subsequently and as a sidebar matter only amongst ourselves are the suggestions from Councilwoman V. Hill Coppler to address the issues of the authority of the city manager, of vis a vis the authority of the governing body, and then a second amendment as well. But what I gather from the city attorney is we can do that on our own subsequently. We can also still, of course, not vote or vote not to accept this E and A, but we are not, without, without the capacity of our potential partner to enter into amendments in real time right now. We really are faced with a decision whether or not to approve the E and A as the motion that was made initially by Councilor Romero Worth.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to, to restate your comments about my motion.
Oh, okay.
Amendment. And, and my, my amendment is not to question the authority of the city manager. The question is to give authority back to the city council or the governing body, which is where I believe it should reside. Not the, in the extension of the term for four more months, another third of the term, but also to the types of updates and reports that we should get as a governing body.
Right.
That's the distinction that I would like to make.
Okay, and if I understood the city attorney's comments in response, it's, those are things we can do subsequently amongst ourselves, not necessarily amending this agreement. So would you like to have a vote on your proposal? Or would you like to withdraw it and take it up as you suggested? You, I could count on you doing it subsequently. I'm, either way.
I can withdraw and I will handle it through a resolution.
The motion is withdrawn and we will be taking it up subsequently in a resolution. So with that, we have a motion and a second to adopt, to approve the E and A as written. There was an opportunity for any other further comment about it. We had a amendment proposed and then withdrawn. Any other comments or shall we move to a vote? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Counselor Cassidy Sanchez.
Foul.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Romero Worth?
Yes.
Counselor V. Hill Coppler?
I agree with the concept of all of this. I'm not against any of it, but I'm very disillusioned with the lack of public input. And I vote no.
Counselor V. Ariel?
After.
After my due diligence reviewing the top finalists and based on my comments earlier, and also in good conscience, I cannot support the ENA. So I will say no.
Counselor Beta?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Thank you. That was a very robust discussion. I appreciate it. If I have the agenda correct, the next thing that happens is Daniel Hernandez has the floor for a brief overview of what happens next. And then we'll be introduced to the, our partner in the Midtown project. So Daniel, you have the floor.
I, I'm actually gonna wait till the end of this whole process, because I think everybody really wants to hear from the developer. But what we're gonna do within this agenda, the developer's gonna make a brief presentation that they've been working on, and then we are going to respond to questions. They're gonna be responding to questions. There are some city questions also that the public submitted, so we'll be responding to those as well. And there is an opportunity for people who are on the YouTube to send questions in the chat space, and so we'll be responding to some of those as well. But we'll go as far as we can. I, I want to make clear right now that there will be subsequent Meet the Developers sessions. They, we will, again, we'll open it up and decide how many we can do tonight, and then have another session like this. And even after that session, there will be topic-oriented sessions with Meet the Developer that we intend to do, that are topic-specific, like on housing or sustainability and green building, jobs and job creation. So we'll just have different ones, so that people can ask more strategic, specific questions on certain topics that we know people are interested in. So that, that's forthcoming as well, and we'll provide dates on the website. I'll talk more about next steps, other opportunities that we're crafting right now for further engagement initially, that are more sort of just information sharing, not building the plan yet, but actually information sharing. So that will happen over the course of the next two months, and we'll put that information out. For now, I'm gonna turn it over to developers to do their presentation and start the Q and A session as well.
Thanks, Daniel. I had a quick question before I introduce myself and get our team introduced. Do we have any idea, do we have a time constraint? Should we, you know, we've got a plan? Should we amend the plan? Are we, you know, where, what are we working with here? I'm, I'm looking for guidance.
Well, as Counselor, Counselor Villarreal reminds me regularly, we can't go past 11:30. I don't know if that's, if that's good news or bad news. But I think you have the floor, and I think people have been chomping at the bit to meet you and hear from you. So I think you should feel free to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, within reason, we don't need an hour presentation. We really want to get the succinct points, and then we can also get questions from the public.
I think they have a presentation that they ought to be able to make, and then we'll get to the Q and A part. But his question was, do they need to be constrained by time? And I think you should take your time and introduce yourself. You only get one chance to make a first impression.
Okay, thank you. So before we get started, I'd like to get Bill Guthrie from KDC to introduce himself. I thought I would, I would introduce myself and give you a little background on what Bill and I bring to the table. And then we've got a video presentation that we wanted to show you that introduces our partners and kind of gives you a broad overview of our team. We'll try to get through that in enough time, believe, plenty of time for Q and A. So, Bill?
Yes, thank you, James, and thank you, Mayor, and council, and staff. I, I echo the yeoman's task that everybody that I'm looking at here and the staff has done over time in this process. It was a big part of the reason we were engaged and intrigued with the opportunity. Just have to absolutely echo, this is once in a lifetime. It's a fantastic piece of property. It's in a wonderful city, and there's so many things that are gonna define ultimately what happens here. And, and we're just at the beginning, and, and we hope you hear that loud and clear tonight, public as well, of getting to start the conversation. So I'm Bill Guthrie with KDC. I've been with the company for 25 years. The company's 30 years old. We've got a national platform and have worked in 30 of 50 states. And we've got some content in the presentation a little later tonight that we can share about where we've been and what we do. But personally, my dad's from Silver City. I grew up in El Paso, and my dad graduated from UNM and just got a huge fondness for the Southwest. My wife and I have a home in Santa Fe. She's a flight attendant for American, and, and just, again, got so excited about getting to know our partners and team members that you're about to be revealed. You probably know many of them very well, but it's just been a real joy getting to know the, the partners and everybody pulling in the same direction in this plan that we are going to start to define. So look forward to talking more.
And then I'm James Field. I'm a principal with Sienda Partners. I joined Sienda in October of 2018. I was, have known the partners here at Sienda for about 35 years, and we've crossed paths in a number, in a number of situations, and mostly in, in public-private partnership settings. Prior to joining Sienda, I was, I worked for about 29 and a half years at Bank of America and the Community Development Banking Group. I was lucky enough to be asked to start up our tax credit investment practices, run a big banking group that included community development banking in New Mexico. But most importantly for this engagement, I was president of Bank of America Community Development Corporation. The ACDC is a for-profit, public-purpose, real estate development company. About two-thirds of our business was affordable housing production or preservation, and about a third of it was public, was a master developer engagements for the public sector, both public agencies and for cities. We, when we started hearing about Midtown, I was very, very intrigued. It's a great piece of property in a city that I love. I looked at the planning guidelines and saw very clearly articulated goals, many of which I'm, I'm very comfortable working with, trying to balance affordable housing and community enrichment-type uses with getting the city the money that they need out of their, their property. And, and we also had some pretty good, high-level guidance on designs that the city or people in the community might like to see or not see. And so when we saw the RFEI, it looked like a best practice that we've participated in around the country. And so we got really interested. We were, we were getting calls at Sienda from other master developer, developer submitters. We picked this team because of the local partners. And while I would really love to let each of the local partners tell you their story about why they're involved and how they, you know, how, what they plan to bring to the team, I know from experience that when we do that, we run really, really long. And so to try to contain this down to an agenda slot that we thought we had, we, we actually made a short video. Actually, it was a long video that's been edited and edited. Like I said, we get very excited when we talk about Midtown. So I'm not sure who's gonna cue the video, but I think now is the time when we'd like to run the video and show you, and let, let our partners introduce themselves and tell you how they got here and what excites them about being part of this team.
Hello. My name is Sage Morris Green. I'm a local business owner and entrepreneur, and I am so excited to be here today to help share our vision for Midtown with you. Thank you so much for being here and for taking part of this process with us. Today, I'm going to tell you a little bit about some of our partners before they introduce themselves. I'm also going to tell you about some of the community and public engagement things we will be doing, since I have worked with a lot of that for our team. But before I get into that, I want to give you a little bit of the background of how Team Midtown came to be in order to provide you with some context for our approach to Midtown. A little under two years ago, I was working with a local entrepreneur who was interested in utilizing the Garson Theater for live performances. An agreement wasn't reached, but like many Santa Feans, I was still very much interested in what would become of the campus. This led me to work with Jamie Blosser of the Santa Fe Art Institute, who are one of our partners. Jamie was very familiar with many of the arts and nonprofit organizations who were interested in coming together to work collaboratively on the campus. I then worked with Justin Golding. Justin represents Pacific Adventures, a company with a strong history in New Mexico who will be bringing the studio component to our development plan. You'll hear more about them later. As Justin and I worked together, and as the city transitioned into a possibility of selling the campus, the idea grew even larger, incorporating things from the public that people have been discussing for a while. As this vision grew, we recognized that we would need experienced professionals with the capacity and the experience to make it work. We knew we wanted a developer who shared our values, who came from a triple-bottom-line perspective, and who had great experience in these kinds of projects. When we met and vetted KDC, we knew we had found the right master developer for this project. KDC's expertise comes from 30 years of experience as master developers of large-scale projects. They've worked on mixed-use community developments ranging from 30 acres to 250 acres. They also have expertise in how to situate varying elements to create a livable neighborhood. KDC also hires local contractors and employers. They often only bring a few project managers from their home base, otherwise employing locally. This will bring an amazing economic boost to Santa Fe in the form of job opportunities and business growth. KDC also has a history of identifying areas where they can give back to the community, and they engage with the aesthetics and history of a place when they embark upon a project. This attention to cultural identity and dedication to uplifting the community, in addition to their considerable experience, are what set KDC above and beyond the rest of the master developers we considered. We were also joined by Sienda Partners to be the other half of our master developer component. Sienda Partners have been investors and developers in Santa Fe on projects including Los Campanas and the La Fonda Hotel and the El Rey Court. One of the Sienda partners you'll hear from is James Field, who has an extensive background in community development and community investments, knowledge we need to accomplish many of our community development objectives. Sienda Partners and KDC bring the development expertise and the financial capacity necessary to successfully manage this project for Midtown. For this vision, along with a strong master developer, we sought out entities in the community we felt were crucial components to meeting the needs and goals of the public. These entities became our partners, and you'll be hearing from them later. You'll notice that I keep mentioning partnerships. That's partly because you're going to be hearing from our other partners, but it's also because we see you as a part of this project. The city is a partner in this development, and so are the people of Santa Fe. We want to continue to hear from the public as this project evolves, because public involvement will inform the development. To help achieve this, we plan to have a community engagement center, which will be a place for the community to meet and have these conversations. This will also be a place for future discussions, shared synergy, co-programming, and community gatherings. We also recognize that the Midtown needs to be a place that unites people and the community. We hope to have transportation that joins the Midtown with the South Side and the Downtown, so that no matter where you live, whether it's at Midtown or somewhere else, you can come to Midtown to take a class, find a free seminar, enjoy a show, and create community with others. We have spoken with the Christian Brothers, and we will continue to work with them, as well as previous professors and students and artists, to make sure we preserve the heritage and the history of the Midtown campus. This is one of the many ways that we're looking to weave together elements of the past and the future, so that we can honor both as we move forward on Midtown. And with that, I will turn it over to our other partners.
Hello, Mayor and city councilors. This is a new and interesting way for us to communicate about proposals that are coming before all of you for decision-making. We at Krista St. Vincent are really excited and proud to be part of the KDC proposal for the master plan. The development of Midtown is probably one of the best opportunities for Santa Fe to demonstrate all that it means to partner. We get to partner in this instance with Homewise, with Santa Fe Community College, the University of New Mexico, and many others. And what's really, and a, a really cool thing about it is we're getting to work with folks that we've worked with for a number of years, people that are deeply committed to the community, to do the right work, to care for them and, and us. This opportunity allows us to have a primary care setting that we can utilize to take care of residents of the Midtown campus, as well as neighbors in the surrounding communities, Hopewell, Sarango, Sarrios, et cetera. And allows us also to create extended training sites with the Community College and the University of New Mexico. Our longstanding relationship with Homewise allows us to create home buying and home renting opportunities for our associates, so the partnership couldn't be better. We look forward to your review of the plan, are available to answer any questions you might have. But I'll tell you, if you start with the right people and you have the right project, you come out of the gate really fast, and we really trust each other, and we're leaning on each other, and we're gonna continue to do our very best work.
My name is Becky Rowley, and I'm president of Santa Fe Community College. Santa Fe Community College is very proud to partner with KDC on its proposal for the Midtown campus. Santa Fe Community College is looking at what our greatest contribution could be in terms of creating jobs for people in the Midtown campus area. So we've visited with Krista St. Vincent. We were looking at surgical technicians as a program that we would first offer to be able to train people in a really important career field, fill a workforce need, and also create opportunity in the area. We would also like to expand our LPN program that we're currently offering at, at Capital High School to Santa Fe High School. This would be a partnership with Santa Fe Public Schools. It would also directly impact the area of the Midtown campus. And finally, we'd like to expand our film program in conjunction with UNM. We have a program in below-the-line film production, and we'd also like to have our students trained in the first two years that would lead up to the bachelor's degree that UNM is proposing to offer. So this would encompass digital media and other art design-type activities that Santa Fe Community College concurrently does. So our proposal would be really solidifying the partnerships that we currently have with Krista St. Vincent, Santa Fe Public Schools, and UNM.
Hello. I'm Justin Golding, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Pacific Adventures. Pacific Adventures is the film studio part of the redevelopment of the Midtown campus. We plan to build upon, with our partners, KDC and Sienda, the Garson Studios, and increase the facility's capacity by four to six brand-new, modern soundstages. During this time, we will be working with the University of New Mexico, Santa Fe Community College, the unions, and other groups of Santa Fe to prepare the workforce for the new career opportunities that will occur from the increased size of the film industry in the city different. We planned, developed, built, and managed the ABQ Studios that are now owned by Netflix for over a decade. In that time, we brought over $3 billion in production-related revenues to the greater Albuquerque area and to the state of New Mexico. During that time, such productions as Disney's first Avenger movie was produced here, Sony produced the TV show Breaking Bad, and Warner Brothers brought one of their Terminator movies here to be made. So not only are we confident that we can build these facilities, we are confident that we can also fill them with high-quality content. With our partners, some of whom I have mentioned here today, and others you will meet here later, we plan to bring new life to the Midtown campus by bringing jobs, places to live, places to learn, and places to relax and play. We look forward to partnering with you and the people of this great city and to do something that we can all be proud of today and 100 years from now. I thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Tim Castillo, and I'm representing the University of New Mexico on the Midtown campus. My title is Special Advisor to the Provos for Santa Fe Initiatives. Over the last year, we had a tremendous opportunity to work with KDC and develop a great relationship for the Midtown campus. This vision was developed by a team of faculty members at the University of New Mexico from a variety of schools and colleges, including architecture, engineering, fine arts, the Honors Program, organizational and learning, film and digital media, and Innovation Academy. The proposal that came out of that team was entitled the Aquifer Center for Art Design, Culture, and Innovation. It'll be an incubator for the Midtown campus. We envision the incubator as a collaborative environment where institutes and industry partners from all over the region and throughout the state can participate in new educational and research opportunities. In particular, we're very excited about the partnership with Santa Fe Community College and the ACC to create a pathway for success for people around the state and in the region, creating new job opportunities in creative industries. We're also excited about working with Pacifica Ventures to develop above-the-line opportunities for, for people and students across the region. We are very excited. We are very excited to be part of this partnership with KDC and Sienda Partners, and look forward to the future evolution of the Midtown Campus. This is a tremendous opportunity for Santa Fe, the region, and the state of New Mexico. Thank you very much, and we look forward to partnering with you.
Hi, my name is Mike Lofton. I'm the CEO of Homewise. We've been very excited about the Midtown Campus project for a really long time, but we knew that in order to do something as complicated and complex as Midtown with a lot of uses integrated together, including housing, it was really important to find a master developer who could coordinate that complexity. And we're very pleased to be partners with KDC on this project. The component that Homewise is mostly focusing on is housing. And we think that the housing component, what's really important about that is, one, is that it addresses the whole spectrum of housing, from housing that serves very low-income people to higher-end housing to everything in between. We also think that it's important that there's rental housing and ownership housing, and that ownership housing is really important because it'll allow local Santa Feans to own something and get ahead financially as Midtown Campus is successful. The nature of the campus, it's important that housing is high-density, including the ownership housing. And that, as much as possible, that housing is integrated into mixed-use buildings with other uses as well. We also think it's really important that we address the housing needs of surrounding communities, including communities like Hopewell Man, which you may be surprised to hear. Hopewell Man's homeownership rate is only twenty-something percent. It's very low. If we care about preventing displacement in the surrounding neighborhoods, then we have to address the needs of those neighborhoods. So we're proposing to create a home improvement loan fund and a down payment assistance fund targeted to the surrounding neighborhoods. Because if people own their own housing, chances of them being displaced is way lower. We've put together, like, really good housing partners on this. Homewise has homeownership housing. We've done over five thousand, helped over five thousand people buy a home now. We've also been very creative in how we finance new housing. We're the first group in the state of New Mexico to use Newmarket Tax Credits for sale housing, which we intend to do at Midtown. We have also recently created an Opportunity Zone Fund that could also bring in financing to help develop the housing. Yes, housing is another partner on the housing front. They've had a very successful record, over three thousand units of affordable rental housing. They too have been very successful at bringing in financing and subsidies to make things affordable, including Newmarket Tax Credit and four percent tax credits. The final other partner for the rental housing is Peter Aberg, who I think many of you know, who has developed over three hundred units now in Santa Fe and thousands of units elsewhere of market-rate rental housing. Together, we want to develop housing that is integrated with a rich mix of other uses. The goal is to develop a vibrant neighborhood where people want to live, they want to work, they want to learn, and they want to play. Looking forward to working with the city and all of you to make this vision happen. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Melinda Skyler. I am the founder and executive director of Youthworks in Santa Fe. We're a Santa Fe-based organization. And we are just thrilled that we are partnered with KDC and Sienda and all the incredible organizations and businesses and architects that are involved in this project to reimagine Mid... We will bring the energy and the interest and the entrepreneurialism that we represent in this town to raise young people from disconnection to incredible opportunity. And we are going to run a community kitchen on the Midtown Campus, but we're also there to help develop workforce and bring young people to employers and businesses, to construction, to digital media, to the arts, to film, to the community college. We're very good at getting young people tracked to the community college, and UNM will help our young people strive even further. Partnership is the key. We're a huge part of the community. We serve twelve-hundred-plus young people a year with workforce and education, case management, and navigation services. We're a huge family, and we're excited to move our family over to Midtown to work with KDC and Sienda and the city to build the Midtown that we all have wanted to see. Thank you so much, and we'll see you soon as we get going.
Hi, I'm Alexander DeZurich. I'm Principal of Autotroph Design. We're an architecture and planning company based right here in downtown Santa Fe. Let me just say that we are so thrilled to be part of this team, a team that combines local knowledge and expertise with nationally-recognized capacity and experience so that we can successfully plan and develop this unique opportunity for the city of Santa Fe. Now, our experience in the Midtenner goes back to 2012, but we were one of the team members of the Remike Festival. This was an urban prototyping event that enabled the citizens of Santa Fe to envision what a redeveloped St. Michael's Drive corridor might look like. And it took place over a weekend at the St. Michael's Village West Shopping Center. What we're able to do as part of this really amazing team is to bring our knowledge and expertise in working with the Santa Fe, the city of Santa Fe, and in the Midtown area to bear on the planning and design process moving forward. And let me tell you, we are so excited to be part of all this. Thank you.
Our vision for Midtown is to create a mixed-use environment that benefits not just Midtown, but the surrounding communities and the city. A place where arts, entertainment, technology, and profit and nonprofit businesses all thrive. This is a place that brings diversity and equity, draws young people to the city, and inspires with its innovation and collaboration. A place where families, workers, and students can connect with each other. This is a place where you can train, obtain an education, follow a career path, all while finding housing, daycare, healthcare, and entertainment, all of the support and structures you need to follow your dreams. This is a place to find a home and a community, a vision different for the city different. These ideas and connections and partnerships are just some of the many that will form as this project evolves. Moving forward, we will continue to identify entities that speak to the greater community and the development so that our community engagement and enrichment continue for the life of Midtown. We are so looking forward to working with you on this project and beginning what will be an amazing adventure with the city to make this development as unique and special as Santa Fe.
Good evening. My name is Philip Quize, and I'm the Chairman of Sienda Partners, one of the master developers for Team Midtown. On behalf of all of our colleagues and all the partners that you've heard from this evening, we are very honored to have been in the process and to be with you this evening. Sienda Partners is an owner of several businesses and projects in Santa Fe. And so we applaud the city's vision on what the Midtown Campus can be for the entire city of Santa Fe. As an employer in Santa Fe, we know firsthand the need to create more affordable housing and more good jobs for all the citizens of Santa Fe. Your vision for the Midtown Campus is our vision. And we believe this vision can be executed without trade-offs. We can build a brand-new community that serves entirety of Santa Fe by only celebrating its past. A great plan starts with listening to the community. And that's what we and all of our partners at Team Midtown have done. And because of that, we have brought together the largest educational institutions in the city and in the state so that we can create a campus that provides lifetime learning opportunities for all the people in Santa Fe. We've brought together the largest affordable and nonprofit housing providers in the state so that throughout the campus, we have a variety of affordable and market-rate housing. We've also brought together the largest creative companies in Santa Fe so that we can continue to foster the creativity in Santa Fe that makes this city such a special place. And finally, we have joined together with the largest health and wellness companies in Santa Fe. Because at our core, and at the core of each of our partners, is a commitment to health, well-being, and sustainability. We know you share the same goals and the same passions that we do. Eight years ago, when I began my conversations to purchase the La Fonda Hotel, I quickly realized we were not having sale conversations, but our firm was going through an audition. Would we be the right owner for La Fonda for the next fifty years? Do we appreciate the historic past La Fonda has enjoyed? Would we continue to invest in the hotel? And will we manage the hotel like the public asset it has and has become? Six years ago, when we purchased the hotel, we soon realized we were not the owner of La Fonda. We were merely its steward. And so, on behalf of all of our partners at Team Midtown, we'd simply ask you to allow us to join you in partnership and become a great steward for the new Midtown Campus. Thank you again for having us. Good evening.
So, thanks for bearing with us. I know just what everybody wanted to do is watch a video, but I hope it gives you a sense of our team's composition and their approach to Midtown. And again, I have another question. We have a, you know, I'd like to walk you through a few slides that show the concepts that we've come up with. What we did was we took the planning guidelines, took the goals in those guidelines, got together with our team, and started thinking through, okay, if we wanted to have housing mixed throughout the community, how might it lay out? If we wanted to have film and education working together, how might that lay out? And I'd say we built a concept that is building blocks. It's really not a plan. It's a starting point to have a conversation, to go out to the community and get a lot of input. But if you'd like to see it, Andrew can put this up on the screen, and we can walk you through four or five slides and show you how we thought about this to get us to the starting point, so.
I think that's a great idea, James.
Okay, sure. All right, Andrew, fire away. This is Andrew Irvine with Standic on Meet.
On Meet, yeah, forgive me. All right, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Fantastic. So I think, Mayor Webber, you mentioned that really this is the start of something, but it's also sort of the heart of Santa Fe. And we took that very seriously when we started on our journey and realized that the beginning was actually a number of years ago. As Alexi mentioned, there's been a lot of thought and effort put into, you know, the Link District. And as you have rightly indicated, this is the heart of this amazing new sort of resurgence, not just for Link, but also for overall sort of Santa Fe. At the same time, we realized that there has been a lot of investment made. There's been a lot of outreach and a lot of thinking about the plan and the opportunity represented on this site. And so, we took very seriously the investment that had been made by the local community in the past to get us to this point. And our job really was to take the best pieces and the ideas to be able to consider what this future possibility might be. We take seriously the importance of being able to create an environment that is walkable, that is human-centric, and that's connected to the broader neighborhood. So it's really not an island, but it's a connected artery that ties in all of the community facilities, whether they're the existing schools and recreation facilities, and creating green paths, bike paths, transit opportunities connected to the existing infrastructure, but really creating that walkable environment. We also were taken by the existing assets on the site and really see the future is really sort of to bring those existing facilities forward and to embed them in the plan in such a way that really does celebrate the enormous history that this site brings. The richness of any community, any built environment, is one that measures its time and its history. And it's not just the buildings, but it's also the stories. As Sage mentioned, you know, speaking to the brothers and the history of the site, the Santa Fe Art Institute, how do we carry those stories into the public realm, into the built form, so that they really do celebrate their past and their present in defining and creating that history? We were very excited by the ability to be able to bring together the partnerships. I've worked across the world in developing master plans. And it's not necessarily the physical plans that make a big difference, but it's the people who are investing, who are really joining together in creating something that has great synergy. And, you know, the most successful plans that I've ever been involved with aren't about the physical aspect of the plan. They're about the people parts. And so, being able to conceive of a mixed-use community that brings together health and wellness, that brings together, you know, capacity building and training through Youthworks, that ties together film production, that is incumbent on the education component, but also sort of forms a place to live that has a multitude of price entry points for people to live in this community, to bring it alive. Seldom have I seen a project that brings together all those pieces, that allows you an early phase of development that's clustered around a vibrant, you know, series of open spaces, plazas, and parks that can create such impact early on. And, you know, we took the view of, well, what ultimately over time might this evolve into? And this is just a first pass that we took to taking, as I mentioned, the best pieces of the plans that have been developed to date and seeing how we can assemble them. But at the end of the day too, as I, you know, we've mentioned, this journey has to engage the local communities, the stakeholders, the city departments, the elected officials, to really ensure that the physical attributes that we ultimately develop reflect the vision and the aspirations that you hold dear and you value as a part of the community of Santa Fe. So, again, this is a starting point. It's not a conclusion. This is the start of a conversation. James, would you care to...
Yeah, Andrew, I think we really need to move on to some questions. I know people are kind of chomping at the bit. We'd love to get some questions, but this map, this just shows you some dots on the map of different projects that are, you know, our master developer team has worked on. They're literally all over the map. And they're each unique and different, and they're each shaped to meet the context of the community they're in. And so, we'd like to talk with you more about, answer your questions, and talk to you more about how we move forward and figure out how to take our building block and turn it into a plan.
So let's perhaps stop sharing and go to the questions.
Answer a question, sure.
Great. Hi, this is Rich, Mr. Mayor and governing body. There's a couple of questions we can throw out to the developers, if I may.
Sure.
Perfect. Let's start with the first one here. It says, "We are facing a huge economic depression, very low tourism, and our business investment at this time. Why do you want to work in Santa Fe at this time?"
So, Rich, that's a... So, let me start with this. So, I live in Dallas, and Texas has quote-unquote "opened up for business", but people are still not out on the street. They're still not in the stores and the restaurants. I think they're truly frightened to go out and interact with people. And so, we know going into this that we don't know. And I would tell you that, you know, when we looked at Midtown, we saw, like I said, a great piece of property, great partners, great, you know, a great community to work in. And COVID is impacting everything we do. We're way into this. We've spent a lot of time, effort, money to get us to the point. We've got great partners. And I think, you know, at this point, what we're hoping to do is get enough time to work together with the city and the community, do as much work as we can to do the community engagement work, to study up on the sites, physical characteristics, to put together the basis of a plan that we think could survive even in a difficult time. You know, Bill and I have got a lot of experience working with master developments that either had to ride through, one, in some cases, two major recessions, maybe three, yeah. We've all, you know, we've been here before. We've seen it before. We know that we come out on the other end. And our partners here deserve a chance. Education, healthcare, and, you know, we're now looking at the content production. Are three areas that look like they could come back quick. Affordable housing has always been a leader as we've come out of these situations in the past. And, you know, we'll have to see how for-sale housing works, but people got to have a place to live. And, you know, if we can piece together a first phase that built off the film production, the education, the healthcare... the education, the healthcare and the housing, we could have a really good resilient first phase of this. And so we're, you know, if this was all commercial development, if this was all centered on retail and commercial and the things that look like they're going to be a long way off, we might pull the plug. But we're, you know, we see reserve, yeah.
Add to the dynamics here, we've got such critical mass in terms of acreage and the fact that it is mixed use, as James was just sharing. And you've got these partners who are still raising their hand and say, yes, needless to say, this COVID-19 has changed where we are right now. But in the long run, it doesn't change where we're going and what we need to do in terms of education, in terms of housing, in terms of economic development and career paths, in terms of the demand for media content in the film studios, and just finding a path. The velocity that we would have thought it would have taken 60 days ago has definitely slowed down. But the real estate fundamentals, the relevance of Santa Fe, the resilience of New Mexicans and Americans, you know, America is not going to sit back and not figure a path forward. And we'll do it as a team and as individual cities and states and a nation. But we're going to pull out of this, and it doesn't change the fundamentals of this location and the real estate. And the partners that you saw in that video, we didn't show up to a location and ask ourselves, what if education showed up? What if, you know, there were some housing demand? What if, you know, there were a career path that didn't need to be created? And the fact that we've got all these people looking at this real estate and each other and asking ourselves, how do we get it done? And what is the sequence? That's what's exciting about this.
Thank you. My next question is, "How are you going to center the voices and needs of those most affected by development of this property in the process of planning and implementation?"
So Rich, I think, I think that's, that's a community engagement question. Just what I read into that is how are you going to make sure you listen? And, you know, we've been very thoughtful about trying to work with city-sponsored community engagement, with partner-sponsored community engagement, and with a plan on our own. You know, part of what we plan to do if we make our way around to the counselors is ask you, who is it we need to talk with? How do we need to, how do we need to account for different voices in the community? And, you know, I think I might like to get Mike to take him, to Mike Lofton, to take a stab at that. You know, he mentioned, you know, some of our early thinking about displacement and gentrification and maybe trying to do some outreach in communities that otherwise might not get heard. Mike, you want to make a, you want to elaborate on any of the things you said in the video?
Yeah, sure. So I think, you know, the Midtown campus is gonna, you know, it's going to affect the surrounding neighborhoods. It also affects the entire city. So I think we're looking at making sure that we're engaging broadly. So, because it should be connected to Airport Road and kids from Capital High School should be able to benefit from things that happen at that, on the campus. So I think we want to, you know, reach out very broadly. I think we especially want to make sure we're addressing the needs of the immediate surrounding neighborhoods like Hope Wellman and spend time talking to people about some of the issues there. Like I mentioned in the video, you know, 20 something percent of the people own their own homes there. And that's a very low homeownership rate for the city of Santa Fe. So we want to increase that homeownership rate. We want to make sure that the low-income homeowners are already there, have access to ways to improve their homes, so they don't lose their home because they can't afford to fix the roof. I think we also need a rental strategy. I know Tomas at Chainbreakers has talked a lot about some of the apartment buildings there and worried about them. We should be working on that kind of stuff now. Can we safeguard that affordable housing that's already there? In addition, increase affordable housing available to everybody by building, like I mentioned in the video, a wide range of housing, including very affordable housing, up to market rate housing at the Midtown campus. I think there's an opportunity to do a lot of stuff here. But in order to do that, make sure it's going to work for people, we got to be talking to people. These are the initial ideas from conversations we've had that I mentioned here. But there's going to be other ideas and good ideas, and that's why that engagement is going to be so important.
Great, thanks. Next question. Are you planning now or in the future to partner with or engage as a tenant the National Nuclear Security Administration, Department of Energy, or and/or Los Alamos National Laboratory in the Santa Fe Midtown District Campus Project?
All I can say is, we don't know what office space will look like when we come out of this recovery. You know, I can tell you, today we see, we see information that says that about between 10 and 20% of the office tenants are requesting rental relief. We can see that companies that had people work from home during the COVID crisis are not planning to bring all of them back to their office. The companies that are planning to have an office open are very open about the fact that it's going to have to be different. It's, you know, the death of the trading desk, if you will, where people are going to demand to have some more protection built in. You know, before we entertained anything with a specific user, we'd have to, you know, we got to know more about what the office market looks like in general. And, you know, we understand that the community's got lots of opinions about the, those names that were thrown out there and would certainly want to listen to those before we made any decisions.
Thank you. Next question is, how will the city ensure that the Midtown campus redevelopment will not further accelerate the decline of the use of plazas by locals?
Well, I'll take a stab at that one. So first of all, you need to know, Siena Partners has a pretty vested interest in the plaza. We're, it's in our name, it's in La Fonda on the plaza. And so we, we're there every day. We know, we know how important it is. There's only one. You know, it's one of my earliest memories of Santa Fe was going to the plaza. And so our job is to work to grow the pie, you know, to get more people into the, into the city that are, you know, doing things that might bring them to downtown of the plaza. You know, if you've got more jobs, more people living there, more activity, you know, you've grown the pie. That's step number one. And then step number two would be to make sure that we work cooperatively. So we're careful about scheduling and we're careful about transportation and we're careful to make sure that things we do on the open spaces or in the open spaces at Midtown wouldn't be pulling away from the plaza downtown.
Okay. Next question, it says, "Santa Fe prides itself in being a progressive and diverse city that states a commitment to social justice and equity. We are concerned about rising rental costs, income inequality, and the impact of this current public health crisis has had on the most vulnerable populations in the city. They would like to know what plans the city has to ensure that the SWOT space is inclusive for all residents, including plans for public housing, public spaces that are open for all."
So, so we committed, all of our housing partners committed to a housing spectrum. You know, we have rental, we have homeownership, we have traditional affordable, and we have traditional market rate. But every one of those developers has said, "Sure, I'm building market rate property. I'd like to have some affordable units. I'm building what's, you know, Chris Baca, Yes Housing said, "I'm building a more traditional affordable property. I'd like to have some market rate, maybe even some live work." Peter Aberg says, "Sure, I'll, you know, I'll put affordable units in every property." And we've gotten everybody to work together to try to create a spectrum of housing in Midtown. We did read the, did read the paper that was put out, and I thought it was a very, very well-written document. But I tell you, today, if somebody asked me, "How are you, what incomes are most important? What, how much should you produce of the very affordable versus the moderately affordable?" I think that answer's changed over the last few days or few weeks. You know, in the planning guidelines, there were specifically, "Do not want housing for the homeless." That may have changed. And, you know, we go into this with ears open. You know, our thinking is, in a structured community engagement setting, we'd have a, we'd have our housers and master development and other partners sit down with the community and get some input on, you know, who should we focus on? Who is, you know, how do we define what's important for this development? And then, you know, adjust our housing spectrum document and make sure that each of the housing development plans that gets put forth in the future is responsive to what we hear. We can't, we can't guess at that. We have to go and just work through it and, you know, get some input and find out what's really important of people in the community.
A next question, it says, "How will it affect your plans, your future plans, affect traffic on Surinam and Yano? And I think also probably neighborhoods too."
Yeah, again, I think there's a lot, there's a lot of, there's a lot of engagement. I see Andrew laughing a little bit, you know, we'd, we'd expect that those track, you know, you got to go through all the formal traffic studies and you got to get a lot of input from the community. I read somewhere, you know, people were interested in slowing traffic down. And, you know, we're, that's one of the things that's very attractive about the planning guidelines. It's about multiple modes of transportation. It's about access to, you know, through the rail, to the bus, to the other, you know, other modes of transportation. Somewhere embedded in all of that is how do you de-emphasize the car? And you still got to get people in and out of the site. You want to make it, you want to make it function. But, you know, I'm sure that some of the folks that are using those streets every day have good ideas about how to control the traffic. And, you know, we go through, again, a formal structured process where you put things out there and you give people an opportunity to say, "Do you like this one a little bit better? Or do you like that one a little bit better? Is it more important to you to have traffic moving slower? Or is it more important to you to have more access?" You know, there's a way to do this. That's what our planners are good at. And, you know, we fully expect that that's just one component. You know, accessibility and connectivity are just one component of some of the structured community engagement that we'd do before we ever put a plan in place that we'd call a master plan.
And I think just if I might just add to that, add to that, James. I think the key to any successful community is providing people choice, making it easy to walk, making it easy to bike. And we've seen such disruption in mobility in the last five years with electric bikes and scooters and Uber and Lyft and drones. So I think we have to really step back and say, what are the human sort of aspects of this community that make it safe and easy for people to move around? And so, you know, really studying that, or using that as a starting point. I think the second point that's really important is that this is a mixed-use community. This is a place where you can live, where you can learn, where you can eat, where you can play, where you can, you know, work and be entertained. So the idea being that you make it easy for people to get all aspects of their daily and whatever life, so that you don't necessarily have to have a car if you don't need to. And even in this post-COVID sort of moment, or this in the middle of COVID, you know, we're starting to see changes in cities. Milan has just repurposed 38 kilometers or 35 kilometers of roads to be predominantly pedestrian and bicycle. So what can we learn from that and use that as a way to help us be more resilient and healthier as a community?
And Bill, you had something you wanted to add?
No, I just thought it'd be great for Andrew to share and, you know, the local office that StanTech has and the horsepower that we've got in Albuquerque. And then I hope everybody can appreciate the platform that StanTech brings in terms of the broad thinking and thoughts from abroad, you know, in Milan as an example, and asking ourselves in Santa Fe, what should we be thinking about? So that's what's exciting about StanTech's participation.
The next question I have, "I believe it is essential to have indicators in a scoreboard to track the potential social, economic and ecological outcomes of proposed design scenarios, mechanisms which track affordability of commercial and residential, walkability, quality of life and footprint. Are you going to use a friendly, transparent indicator scoreboard mechanism in your engagement?"
So I'll take a shot at that, and anybody else on the team that wants to chime in can chime in. It's so early in the process, you know, for, let's think about all the things that would need to vet. If you're talking about sustainability and you say, you know, I look at sustainability and there's a number of different indicators you could be lead, you could, you know, there's a bunch of different standards. We need to be, we need to get community input to figure out which ones are most important for this community, establish a standard, and then sure, we'd report about our success at meeting that standard. You know, Bill and I can point to a bunch of projects that have got a LEED certification. We've got others that have enterprise smart communities. We've just got, we've got a lot of different standards that we, you know, that we sometimes are more applicable to a particular deal than others. And so when we start with that, we'd like to make sure that we're picking those standards based on community preference and input. And that then you set up the dashboard and report on it. But, you know, if you're going to say you need to do that, you need to be prepared to report on it.
Next question, "Do you still recognize the pull public's requests to maintain an institute of higher education with a film school? This person says, "As a former chair of SWOT's Film School, "I now, I know we once again became a prominent attraction for young people to move to Santa Fe, "benefits which far outweigh any more empty shopping malls. Thank you for this consideration."
Yes. You know, I think, I think you saw a highlight of that in our, in our video. That's one of the most exciting components of this team is that we can marry, you know, production with a film school, with a community college, with a training program, and produce not only a great, you know, content and a really good, exciting user of the site, but also push opportunity out into the community, you know, and it's, it's a continuum of education. It's not just higher education. It's, you know, training. And I felt like that from our perspective. Sure, you can just put a studio in there, or you can just put a film school. But, you know, we're willing to work a little harder to put the two together and make sure that if a producer, if you're producing content that you know coming in, you're expected to work with the schools, to provide the students at those schools real-world opportunities to get to know the producers, to get to know the job and have a head start on getting a good job when they finish their, their training, their degree or their associate's degree. We're, in fact, insisting upon making sure that those two get married together.
Can I chime in a little bit as well, James? I think it's a great opportunity for, for the community, but also for institutions involved, in particular, looking at below the line and above the line, but also really thinking about the future and the possibility of a destination for emergent film. So looking at new technologies like virtual reality, augmented reality, and really thinking about how that can be impactful to the region and actually a destination for creators in the future. So I think, you know, at the University of New Mexico, we're very interested in those kind of opportunities.
I think also jumping in as well to, you know, underlying what Tim and James just said, is the very simple fact that we're looking to create a national training program with the universities, with Santa Fe Community College and the unions. This is important for multitude of reasons, the educational component, of course. But also, when we build new sound stages, we have to build new crew. Because we, Netflix and NBC Universal already here, we have a lot of crews, but we're going to need to train more crew for these jobs. So it's important for a multitude of reasons. And we do see a clear path from the community college to the university, the unions and straight into jobs. So there is something that's very cohesive that we're looking at doing here.
Great. Okay. I'm looking at a live chat question that just came through here. It says, "Could this development be the anchor for a tech center in Santa Fe?"
Absolutely. That's one of the things that KDC focuses on is, you know, kind of the employment piece. And employers are chasing the employees. And so if we can show startup companies and even larger companies what's happening with HEC and SFCC and UNM in terms of education, we're seeing employers love to have that proximity to their employment pipeline. So it used to be where, you know, the employee would chase the job and move to wherever the job opportunity is. Now, these companies are pursuing the talent. And so that's these companies are, are pursuing the talent. And so that's one thing we're very excited about. There's been some other people in the community, uh, that we've already started conversation with about how this can become a a tech hub and an employment hub. And you'll note in some of our concept planning, and please know it's conceptual, but part of a healthy community and place making is this employment piece. So we're very excited about that.
And we've, and we've done it before. Um, one of the master developer engagements I was involved in, part of the team that, that pulled together, uh, a university setting that had a digital media focus. And the idea was that, that, that we would, uh, attract a company that wanted to, uh, locate near the, the graduates of that program. And, you know, the plan didn't come together exactly as it was envisioned early on, but it did come together. And now, you know, now there's a, a large campus. And a very large gaming company located there because the, uh, because there's a very good digital media program at that school. And so again, it's very similar to what we're trying to do here. It's on a completely different scale and in a different context, but the, the basic premise is the same. Create the people that the employers want in a place that, that people want to be, and you can, you can attract the employers.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna switch over now to some city staff questions since my two subject matter experts are here. Um, the first one here, it says, uh, when will the complete RF AI submission of KDC be released to the public? And in particular, RFBI requirements, including Tab G, master development vision plan, uh, using a green buildings, et cetera, and, uh, uses, uh, that can be made public. So maybe Daniel can address that portion of Tab G. It's concerning the district vision plan.
But, uh, uh, everybody, uh, the, the whole proposal should become public at this point.
Right. And so we'll, we'll post that on our Midtown Center, Midtown District, Santa Fe dot com website, and it'll be on our city website too. Uh, next question, um, city staff that says, I'd like to know why two out of town finalists were picked for this large project. Do you have any connection? They do not have any connection to Santa Fe and why would we even consider a Singapore-based company? And the last Singapore-based company for profit school led to the rise of Midtown campus. Uh, I'd also like to know why the F Health Group was not considered.
Yeah, I would just offer that hopefully as this reveal, uh, continues, you'll, everybody will appreciate that this was by, by no means, uh, a KDC, uh, call it contemplated, partnering or team opportunity. We showed up to, in town last July at the recommendation of a friend who said, hey, there could be a great mixed use opportunity, master developer opportunity in Santa Fe, and we're introduced to, every, started to be introduced to everybody that we're talking to now. And the conversations just started from there. So the message really is, and the reality is it started locally, it remains local. KDC as a company will bring, uh, some expertise and some capital and some implementation and some uh, experience to this conversation. Uh, but I would argue that it's, it's very local. And then James, you know, I'll let you talk about Sienna Partners and uh, I'd love to have Krista St. Vincent and Youth Works and just so many of our other partners have a voice here too, and just talk about these conversations that started over a year ago.
So Bill, I think, I think, Daniel, I don't know whether you need to respond, but, or, and if you want us to add, uh, get some of our other local partners to, to chime in.
I think people are tired of hearing from me, uh, but all I can say is that, um, I was communicating with the counselor recently. You know, this is a long project. This is, uh, it's not gonna happen, uh, you know, next week, next year, it'll last many years. And there will be so many opportunities for others to get involved in the project. Um, and what we were seeking was a master developer partner, partner with us to choreograph that process over several years' time. But, uh, the team you see today, we're hoping that we're planning that there will be others, um, that will participate in the redevelopment of the Midtown site. Um, and so again, this is day one, day two, three, four, et cetera, is gonna look different and it'll grow and evolve. But what we want to do is establish the basic development plan with this group, but I, I'll let the others speak. I, I just, I'm gonna kind of just remind people that this will, people, the players, everything will, will continue to evolve.
I, I'd like to speak from Youth Works' perspective.
Please do, Bill.
Prior to, this is, I'm Melinda Skyler. I'm the founder and director of Youth Works. In fact, last Friday, Youth Works turned 19 years old. And in all those years, we have never worked alone. We've always had to work with partners. We're extremely collaborative. Our young people learn by having exposure to a whole variety of experiences and job opportunities, training, professional trade certifications. I was in discussion with the city for at least a year before the RFBI even came out about how we might be able to access, um, the big kitchen that exists there, um, that was serving the college. Because our culinary program has taken off and is now a social enterprise. We employ at least 50 young people in that program a year, and many of them are, uh, moving along career paths for larger, greater education and/or just into the local hospitality field. So my point is, we serve quite a number of young people. Come, they come to us seeking opportunity. We don't work alone. We work in, in huge partnership with the community. There's so many partners. I, I want to introduce to KDC Sienna and the Midtown team that are all extremely excited about the opportunity that's coming. Uh, we just haven't been able to speak about it until now. So, so the wave of energy will come, um, at least on our tail. We're, we want to bring it forth. So thank you for letting us do this. We're excited.
Thanks, Bill.
I think, um, I think this might be a really good opportunity to mention for everyone watching. You'll see how small the tiles are already. We actually have a number of team members that are also here in spirit and are listening, and they are not pictured here visually right now, like another 15 people or so. So I really wanna point that out in order to assure people, this is very much a local Santa Fe team. We brought in a developer who happens to be from somewhere else because they are amazingly experienced, both of our master development halves. But most of the people on our team are very local to Santa Fe and a lot of our ideas came out of conversations that people had had all over Santa Fe for years about the things that they wanted to see on this Midtown campus project. Um, so I think it's a good thing to keep in mind, and we definitely are all excited to continue to work to represent the community from all of our perspective angles.
And I'd say, one last, one last item.
Erica too, to say something when you're done, James.
Okay. Now, there's a lot of research out there that says that the highest performing teams have got the most diverse opinions brought to the table. Uh, you know, you, if you've worked for a big company and you've been through a lot of diversity training, a lot of times that's trying to sell people on the need to be to have diversity. But diversity of opinion is hugely important, especially in creative endeavors. And as we look at, um, at developing a plan for Midtown, it's a creative endeavor. Uh, it's a balancing act. And, um, you know, I, I think if you've got a, a single group, kind of group think all headed one way, sometimes it's kind of hard to, it's kind of hard to listen. So Erica, you had something you wanted to add?
I'm Erica Campos, and I'm strategic planning for St. Vincent. And so we're, we're excited about the project. Number one, we're the largest private employer in Santa Fe, and we need a place for people to be able to afford to live. And we want them to put down roots in Santa Fe and not commute from Albuquerque. And the workforce development piece with the community college is very, very important to us as well. And putting all of that on Midtown is, is great for us. Um, our piece of the project is about primary care. And so we listen to our patients. Uh, and what they want is, you know, convenient, uh, places to get care of where they live. There's already some neighborhoods, uh, in the area that could use primary care. So that's, that's our contribution.
Uh, so I'm gonna, uh, the question here from the chat that I want to have for city staff, I think this is your Daniel, that says, it was mentioned that this property is costing the city about $8,000 a day. Is this the primary goal to sell this property, retiring the obligation? What happened to attracting a school to campus?
If I, if I interpret the question correctly, the question really fundamentally is, is the financial return on the transaction the primary goal? Is, is that generally it, Rich?
Generally it, yes.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think that these are public policy decisions that the city council is, and the governing body is gonna have to make. There will continually be discussions about community development objectives, which, which will influence the land value of the, the, of the site. And, um, I think just based on the public dialogue and the, uh, constant updates that we'll be giving the city council, they'll understand these tensions between land value and community development objectives. Um, they're inextricably linked and they affect each other. So we'll continue to develop analysis, financial analysis to tell us where does we want to be. But ultimately, that is a governing body's decision about what their expected financial return will be during this process.
Okay, great. Uh, next question, I think this might be for city attorney. Resolution 2018 dash 54 authorized the commencement of the planning stage references the Residence Bill of Rights Resolution, 2005 dash 65, as a framework for housing and urban planning policy, as specifically related to the upcoming and ongoing planning processes. How was the Residence Bill of Rights used as a metric for evaluating the RFBI submittals? And in what ways did the recommended developer, Denim Straight, experience with and commitment to the values and practices of the Residence Bill of Rights? This could be Daniel or, or.
Yeah. So, um, the Residence Bill's rights could still be in, involved in the ongoing development. The specific criteria that were used were the Midtown Planning Guidelines, which were adopted in that same resolution. So I believe some of those guidelines come from those philosophies. Um, I don't know if we have those readily available, but they're posted on the Midtown site. Um, and some of them have to do with affordable housing, access, sustainability. And, and basically this whole process is, is gonna be, um, further determined by the community. Um, I don't have the Residence Bill of Rights in front of me either. That resolution was drafted, uh, before I started. It was passed right after I did start. So I'm not intimately familiar with that particular document. So we can, we can post an answer to that later, um, because I don't have the Residence Bill of Rights in front of me. And I, the, the Midtown Planning Guidelines are posted on the Midtown website, and those were the criteria that applications were evaluated by.
Yeah. And, and all of these questions, we will post answers to them in an FAQ document. Next question, uh, for the staff, it says, much of the process that led to the recommendation of the master developer seemed opaque from the community's perspective. Once the developer is chosen, will there be other procurement requirements that all follow the same process that the RFBI did in the next phases? What can the community expect in terms of transparency from the city and the developer during the next phases?
Rich and everybody, um, so there, this is, it's one big procurement. So this is one step along the way. Um, and the, the the development and disposition agreement that we've been referring to will have the terms, um, for, for what the final disposition will look like for the, for the property, whether or not, um, it'll be a sale, a partial sale, a lease. And those, those documents will go through a public process in order to be adopted. They're all, there is no longer, as to this proposal, there's no other confidentiality restrictions, um, other than if there's proprietary information, whether it be financial or, um, related to trade secrets. But other than that, everything will be entirely available to the public. The only confidentiality provisions throughout the procurement are, um, while there is basically while like, while there are competitors in place. So as this group, they are no longer competing. Um, we will either be successful or we will not. To other groups, um, they are unless this decides to discontinue the procurement as it relates decide with, those are the only confidential materials at point.
Okay. So that leads me to the other question, uh, Aaron, it says, uh, is the local regional team roster also still considered private information?
No, it is not. It, it will be posted.
Perfect. Okay.
Rich, can, I'm just gonna interrupt real quick. I just want to make sure that the counselors are still comfortable with proceeding with questions. Maybe just throw that as a question out there. Are you comfortable with proceeding with questions, counselors?
Yeah, I was gonna give them time also to, uh, ask questions of the developer. So, um, okay, I think there's probably two left that we're gonna do, and then I'd like to make sure that the counselors have.
Okay, good, good. Thanks, Rich.
Um, uh, let's see, I'm just looking at all the questions we have here. Uh, I think this is for the city attorney. Process used to select the front runner.
I think this is the process that Council Romero Worth was describing earlier. It was a competitive sealed procurement, um, which means that the city put forth, um, a set of parameters before it received any sort of, um, proposals. And those parameters were publicly posted and the, um, points that would go to each of those criteria were publicly posted. There was a timeline. There were multiple campus tours to entice proposers to check out the site and understand better what, um, was available there. Um, my understanding is, um, those tours were all very full. There were several in the fall. Um, and then folks came together either individually or on teams into four different categories that, um, the city was looking at. Because the master developer, um, category had seven very qualified, um, applications, the valuation committee reviewed those first, because those could affect the other categories. Um, and from those seven, they ranked them based on the evaluation criteria that were publicly posted. Um, and then from there, they entered, they came up with a finalist, um, or a finalist group, which was also described as part of the process in the request for expressions of interest. Um, and the finalist group was selected for interviews and follow-up questions that were in. So they did in-person interviews with each of the top three master developers, and they also provided in-depth, um, follow-up questions to get more details about the proposals. Um, and asked, and then I also follow up on references for those three finalist candidates. Based on that information and the scores, the evaluation committee made a recommendation to the governing body to select, uh, this, this developer group. And, um, and provided the governing body the opportunity to review all the proposals, the scoring sheets, the evaluation memo, all the questions that were asked, all the responses to the written questions that the governing body could verify that the evaluation committee, um, applied the process as the city stated it would. Um, cause that's, that's the main thing that the city has. Once the city puts forth a publicly described process, the city then has to follow it. I mean, it has to follow its own rules. And that's, that's what the, um, the evaluation committee very meticulously and, um, incrementally followed those steps that were set out.
Thanks. Uh, two, two more questions I have here. Um, these are chat questions. Uh, it says, during the twelve-month process, finalizing working agreement, and we, the community utilized the campus as a food court, social distancing space to picnic and hear music there this summer. I think the pandemic will, will allow us to understand whether or not, uh, we, we can, we can do that. So, um, uh, I think that's it. So, uh, one, one last question for the developer. It looks like from the chat, cause I wanted to go to all different, uh, channels before we get to the counselors. It says, um, where's the funding coming from for SFCC, UNM, Youth Works, et cetera?
Rich, did you say funding?
Funding, yes. Capital funding.
Right. That'll, uh, be determined, uh, over this course of business. And once business plans are established and for instance, there's hopes that some of these organizations might be able to take over some existing buildings. Uh, and, uh, you know, that would be a different economic model than if, uh, and when we get to new ground up development. Uh, and so that's, that's very much a part of understanding the existing building stock, the, the state of those for occupancy. state of those for occupancy, capital that might be required to occupy those. And whether it's a short-term lease or if it's a long-term lease, that's very much part of the underwriting we'll be doing in this period.
Great, thanks. Okay, with that, I'd like to turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor and governing body to ask if any of the counselors have any questions that they have based upon what they've learned so far.
Thank you, Rich. Thank you for being the emcee of that part and thank you to our new partner for being so forthcoming and to all of the other folks on the, on the screen. I know everybody on the governing body would like to ask some, some questions as we conclude the evening and I want to give everybody a shot at doing that. I know some of the questions are about process, about the ongoing commitment to community engagement, so if we can go back to just putting up your technological little hand, blue hand on the screen, I'll just run the field and everybody can have a chance to get some questions out to the developer at this point in time. And I'll just, whoever wants to lead off, it's, now's the time. I surprise Counselor Garcia, you get your chance to ask all those questions, it's your turn. Go get them.
First, I just want to say congratulations to the Midtown team and their successful proposal. I think we all want to see something great happen in this opportunity with Midtown, whatever happens. And to get to the question I had asked earlier, how can we be great partners to ensure that we're supporting you to ensure that positive community engagement happens? I think you, you've got some folks here that are willing to help you. As I mentioned earlier, we're willing to throw up the alley-oop to you and how can we help you slam dunk that component? So with that, how can we be of assistance to you?
Well, I love that analogy because it does imply that we're going for the same goal. And I hear you, Councilman, and please know that you'll know very shortly, we plan on starting with one-on-one interviews with each of you and, and starting that dialogue where we can get to know each other and start that communication. And then it's going to broaden from there as to your recommendations with whom we need to speak to next. We're going to have very public gatherings. Some of them probably virtual like this in the time being and figuring out how technology can serve and start this communication. But we're going to start in earnest right away.
Yeah, Bill, I did, I had one thing. You know, frequently, if a counselor hosts the meeting, we get a little bit better participation. You know, so something along those lines is, would be, we would be grateful, you know, if, if you have, you have constituents that you feel like we need to touch, they might, they might respond to an invitation from you better than they would from us. And so that's, we're open. You know, there's, we have to focus this, but we're starting out with a big funnel. Where, you know, we'd like to get goals, aspirations, desires, concerns, big picture things on the table. And then as, as we start moving forward and learning more about the site and what's possible, given our current environment and economics and everything else, we'll bring it down to more specific things. You know, we talked a little bit about traffic and connectivity, we talked about housing affordability, we've talked about just, you know, how all the different education components work together with film, you know, but would like to start big and broad and, you know, I think the Santa Fe Art Institute was going to host a a visioning meeting and it got canceled because of the COVID restrictions. And we were so excited to go hear what people hoped the campus could be. And so just if you point us in the right direction, maybe help us host a meeting, I think that would help us get to the right people and hear the right things. But we appreciate you asking.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cassidy Sanchez, I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you. First of all, this is a question, I believe, for Rich and Daniel and our city team, but also for developers. I would really like to make sure this video is shared. I think it was a great introduction to who you are and your partners. I was wondering if there's any way we can get it somehow in Spanish, even if that's just Spanish subtitles. Would that be a possibility, team?
That's a definite possibility.
Wonderful, perfect. That was my first, my first question. So I, I really enjoyed seeing the video and seeing your partners. There were some partners that were in the proposal that you had presented and not in the video. Are those still partners that are that you're working with, that you're in conversation with? Has that discussion changed and? If so, how?
Well, thank you, Councilwoman. We definitely, we've got a longer video too. So we're going to let, have you have that and, and all of our partners make that video. We do have some confidentiality on some discussions that have been had, but no, look forward to full disclosure there.
Wonderful, great. Glad to hear. And then you did mention that, or we, you know, in talking with partnerships as you are, you mentioned these are really building blocks. If the community, if there are, there are groups or organizations that you are, that were very invested in having you speak with, I assume that you are open to working with those partnerships, correct?
Sure, yes, that's what we expect.
Another piece that, that I wanted to see, if you've been talking with Santa Fe Public Schools at all, I know education is frequently a a conversation in our community about something that we want to improve and something that we want to build upon. I'm curious if you've given any thought beyond the higher education piece, but the entire education pipeline, specifically with some of the schools that, you know, students might have not as much of an opportunity to take advantage of as some, some of the other schools in our area. There's definitely inequities across the city. I'm curious if this is something that you've thought about and had discussions about.
We have, and I think part of them, so we had a submission date and then we, we had a confidentiality agreement. And we felt like it's, once we submitted, we, we probably needed to, to cut off, you know, for example, other teams. There are, there are groups that were submitters with other teams that we, you know, would like to talk to, but we didn't feel like we were able, under our confidentiality agreement. The school system is an obvious, we've got schools that border the property, we've got a continuum of education that picks up where they leave off. Higher Education Center has got a relationship with those schools and we've always intended to to work from as early childhood education provider as we can find all the way up through the higher, higher level degrees. It's a it is a huge trajectory changer. If we can improve someone's education, then their, you know, the metrics say that they do so much better on every, on every measure, you know, it's, we're trying to change the community, that's a place we got to focus.
So James, to jump in on that, we are working with SFCC, as you know, and they're already in the high schools surrounding that place. And one of the ideas and plans that we have is to bring them onto the campus through the programs already set up by, by SFCC. And to talk about that entire, you know, continuum, as James was just talking, we're even going to the point of discussing a childcare center because as we know, that is a big need in Santa Fe. And so delivering that, not just for one or two entities, but all the entities that will be on that campus is part of how do people, you know, start from childbirth, you know, all the way through to higher education. So this is definitely something that is key to what we think the success in this campus will be.
That's, I'm really.
I was just going to say, I want to mention that I think it's come up once before tonight. In addition to these really nice pathways that we're trying to create for education, that's why we want to try to incorporate some kind of transportation bump and figure out a way to create better transportation from other areas in town so that it doesn't become something where it's just, okay, if you happen to be locationally convenient, then you're taking advantage of this. It's really going to be something where we're working to make it accessible for all of Santa Fe, not just the neighborhoods in that area, although we definitely want to reach out to the neighborhoods in that area as well.
Yeah, that's something that, you know, we, we hear a lot about in Santa Fe is that there are a lot of challenges with early childhood. Not just affordability, which is absolutely an issue, but also just the lack of space and the lack of places for children. So, so that's something that I'm really excited to hear about as well. Public engagement, obviously, that is, that is the theme of tonight, of a lot of our discussions. And I would really like to hear about some of your ideas for how to engage with individuals who don't have access to internet and technology right now. Because it's harder, because of COVID, and how we are going to really bridge that gap. These are already individuals that, that are frequently left out of the conversation during regular times. But right now, I believe that that, that technology gap is going to be even more detrimental for reaching out to those members of the community. I'm hoping this is something you've already started to think about and I would really like to hear what those, what those thoughts are.
So Andrew, could you talk a little bit about some of the phone-based and then Sage, would you talk some about the, about activities and various ideas we've kicked around? Actually, we kicked around some pretty exciting ideas. We got all excited about trying to make this meeting more accessible to people on the site and realized we didn't have enough time. So Andrew, would you kind of walk through the phone base?
Yeah, there's, there's a bunch of technologies that are available at the moment that allow us to reach as many people as possible. And, and I think it goes back to analog, right, to, to meeting people where they are using church groups, community centers and, and other local institutions that we could reach out to, to solicit input. The second is, you know, the simple letter drop, right? Keeping people up to date with what's happening with, with, you know, access to, to local newspapers as, as well as mailouts or, or letter drops. The third is, you know, using survey tools, whether, James, as you say, they are, you know, phone-based to be able to solicit input as well as testing ideas. And then fourth, what we're seeing is just, you know, in the same way that we're now communicating via Zoom or YouTube, there are enormous number of platforms that are cell-based technology or web-based technology that are both communication tools, you know, preference mapping and other sort of platforms that allow us to use the virtual world in the way that we are. So I think, you know, to be fair with the world we live in at the moment, we're going to have to use as many of those platforms as we possibly can to both solicit input as well as to, you know, communicate outward the, the ideas that are starting to form it. And it's, 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 it's just going to take a big effort because we, we all are in this together, this new world. But, but, you know, we're excited and we're committed to, to making this work because we only get, you know, one chance at this.
And I think that a lot of that will, will phase. And so all of our virtual technologies, we're going to have to rely more on those now just because of the COVID situation that we find ourselves in. But as we move into a time where we're able to actually gather again, we have a lot of really neat ideas for, you know, beer gardens for twenty-one and up, not for kids, but also family kind of spaces. We had an idea to create a lot of different types of parks, which we're really excited about. So we would have like an art park that honors a lot of the art and history on the campus and is more dedicated to that. We'd have like a meditation kind of park where people can, you know, sort of have calm, nice moments. So we want to, and it's not just parks, but we want to create themed areas that allow people to find that kind of connection. And because of that, we then have an opportunity to utilize those spaces also as public gathering, public input kind of spaces. So we can, we can hold events in those spaces. Like James mentioned, the Santa Fe Art Institute was going to do a really neat event and we were really looking forward to working with them on that because they actually are one of the partners on our team. And we're really excited to see what kind of community engagement we get through events like that, that third-party people want to host, but that we're connected with so that we can make ourselves available as, as a way of connecting with the public and engaging with them that way.
Yeah, that's, that's wonderful. I'm really happy to hear that discussion of connecting with partners throughout the community and really looking to tap some of our experts who are already doing this work. And so I, I absolutely encourage that. And, and I really look forward to hearing more how this evolves. This is such a new world. I think that also the city will probably be able to learn some techniques from you. So I, I do look forward to that. It's late, I know a lot of people have questions. I do look forward to speaking with you more as Counselor Garcia mentioned. You know, we do see ourselves as partners in this, so please let us know how we can help you. And that's, that's what we're looking forward to. So thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Vihil Copley, you, you have your hand up.
Thank you. I, I, I just want to make a statement, toss it out and just kind of let it be known. I am a member of the Santa Fe Association of Realtors. And I want to state that the majority of opinions that we hear is that we need affordable housing. And we've worked very diligently and very hard on trying to be involved with several organizations who also have the same goal. And I heard tonight that potential market housing would go into Midtown. And I think that defeats the whole purpose of what we are hearing, not only with the Realtor Group, but with what we're hearing all around the city. I don't think we need any more market housing. And I will say, from a Realtor's perspective, we have many, many homes that qualify for market housing. And, you know, they're doing very well. What we don't have is affordable housing. So I, I will not support any measure for market housing. I, I don't think we need it. And I don't think the association will either. Next, I wanted to ask, in the documentation we have for town halls, it says that we would have three and there's four districts. So being that Midtown is in my district, then I, I already want to put forth that one of those town halls, one of the three should be District Four. So I know Counselor Cassidy Sanchez would probably agree. And so I want to state that. But aside from that, I'm wondering how you will engage the public with only three town halls?
I want to, I just want to correct that, that's just, so in the memo, we've said that we would have about four or five meet the developer sessions and those were the topic-oriented developer sessions. And subsequently, after that, I said that we would have city counselor and mayor hosted events. And we're hoping that every councilman will volunteer to do a host event in their district. So there's no limit on, on, on either one of those things.
Although, well, okay. That's in our documentation tonight. I just.
I'm reading directly, I'm reading directly from it right now. So then I'll clarify the very.
Okay, and then along the same lines as Counselor Cassidy Sanchez, you know, I'm concerned about engaging low-income and disadvantaged populations in the city and specifically around this campus. And also with the non-English speaking, will you have interpreters? And I'm not, I'm not really, I want to be positive, but I don't expect that we're going to get off this viral system of meeting before even the end of the year. Maybe so. Who's to say? But, but we're going to have to use this venue, type of venue for a long time. And I'm concerned that there are people out there who can't afford the equipment, the technology to be able to participate. And, and those are the ones that I think we need to be more mindful of. And and I think the timing of when these meetings are, I mean, some of these people have, they, if they are lucky enough to still have a job, they go home and they have children to feed. They have things they have to do, get them ready. And so I'm not sure that the way we are accustomed to having our meetings at this five o'clock hour where right now, this is public engagement. where right now this is public engagement, I don't know, I mean, it's almost 10 o'clock. I don't think this is the kind of time we need to have these kinds of meetings for people who really need to be part of the process. I suggest that you rethink when the best times to reach people are. Maybe, you know, during the day and not at five o'clock. I mean, we've had our say. It's time to get out there with people and integrate into their lives. So I want to ask about interpreters. Is that something that you all have thought about?
We have, well, obviously, we have not, but we haven't and didn't put that in place tonight, but it doesn't mean we can't. We do understand that a lot of our audience may be Spanish speaking primarily and got to make, got to make things accessible if you want to get their input. So sure, we'll, we'll get to work on trying to figure out how to get some interpreters. It's one of the, I've done that before. It's a, it's an unusual meeting. It's hard to get a flow when you're, we got presenters that speak one language and an audience that speaks another. So we may, you may want to plan those carefully to make sure that we have a mix of meetings, some with interpreters, others maybe that don't. We'll just work, work to try to find a solution with that. We don't want people to get stymied by a language barrier.
Well, I mean, I envision one of these squares to have an interpreter so that people in our community know what we're talking about. And I'm going to have interpreter at every press conference, including others that we see on the national news, other governors. You know, it's not, it's not something that's unheard of or that hasn't been tested. But I really think from here on forward, we need to have probably figure out a way to translate into other languages what we're saying, but also for the heart of hearing. And so, I mean, we, we really, if we're really in this to engage the public, I think we need to communicate on levels for everyone's benefit. So I would just like to suggest that.
Madam Councilwoman, I think we are very much on the same page with you. We actually had had conversations about having interpreters, like you're talking about, when we'd envisioned having these kinds of meetings in a public space. I think the new realities imposed on us by the reality of Corona changed a lot of things that we had to think about. And so I agree with you that that sort of maybe fell by the wayside a little bit. And it is a really interesting idea to, moving forward, look at how do we have all the different interpreters we need in a virtual space? Because we had thought about it in a physical, real gathering space, but not in this kind of presentation. So I think that's a good point. And it's something we can definitely work on.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. And I, one more, I got a text as we were going through. And I thank you for the video and all of that. And I don't know if it was lost in translation, but someone questioned, what about the library? Is that included in your plan?
It is one of those existing buildings that definitely has some appeal. And some of our partners have expressed interest in figuring out how to occupy it. So yeah, I think it's a special place, unique design, and it may really fit well with going forward. There's 500,000 feet of existing buildings on site. And from just acknowledging from a distance and what little exposure we've had to them, you know, there's 250,000 feet of it that probably wants to remain. You know, again, that's from as much one quick walk through or from the outside, but Fogelston is definitely a keeper.
Well, I'm glad to hear that because many, many people have expressed to me that that needs to stay and maybe combine it with the Oliver LaFarge Library and have one major opportunity for our residents and our children to get the education and the resources that they need. And, and I think it's important for the library to stay. So I'm just going to give you a little hint of public opinion.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you. And that's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Viall. You have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thanks to the public for your thoughtful questions. There were some good ones out there, and I know we didn't get to all of them, but we'll make sure to get those answered. I believe on the website. Is that correct? We'll have the answers on, where would the answers be for the public to see?
The mayor, city councilor, it'll be on the website. We'll put it up as an FAQ. We'll make an announcement once it's there with the link.
Great. And just so you know, it's very easy to do interpretation needs. It, we have, it's not, it's simultaneously going on where people have headsets that need them. That's when, obviously, when we'll be able to meet in public. But there are ways that community groups have already done it locally that are able to have the conversation going on in real time and then also have somebody translating as interpreting simultaneously. So I just think there's ways that, and we have local partners and people in the community that really know how to do this well. So that being said, I want to make sure that as we're looking at public engagement, we had been talking about a community advisory group. And we actually had talked about that a long time ago, and I'm glad it's back on the table again. We had discussed about if we're utilizing community partners and you all really feel like that's important to you, that it's not an extractive partnership with these folks. These are people that have expertise, lived experiences that really could lend and add value to your understanding of our area, to the community, to things that are possible on the campus. So I'd encourage you to not approach it and even asking councillors, hey, what, who should we talk to? Well, the people that need to be talked to and the partners that are already established, that already have trust within community groups and neighborhoods really shouldn't just be approached from an extractive point of view. And so the idea of mini grants had come up in the past for community engagement partners. And we still hadn't flushed that out in the past. And I'm wondering, I'm wanting to know more about, we've talked about it so many times that I feel like it's not even going to happen. But I'd like maybe Daniel to elaborate or any of you to explain to us how community grants will be utilized in an effort to be able to support community knowledge, expertise, and lived experiences.
Yes. So the community stipend, the mini grant, however it ends up getting called, is still on the table. And it's one, it's one of the elements of the scope of work that the, the public engagement consultant be working on and, and interacting with the community advisory group to help develop the priorities and the outcomes for that grant. And the intention is for it to go to community, community and civic organizations to engage people in different ways. And so there's, that will be part of their scope of work to facilitate that and get it out of the street so people can respond. You're on mute. You're on mute.
What I was trying to say is that just providing a community group a stipend, I don't think is enough for showing the value of their expertise and also their ability to reach a certain community group or neighborhood. So just want to put that out. And most of you know that my background is in community planning. And Dr. Castillo, good to see you on the screen there. I did go to, through the Community and Regional Planning Program and have a master's in MCR, in CRP. And what I'd like to know, because I'm familiar with this group, there's two entities that actually do community group work at UNM. There's the DPAC group and then there's RCRP. And I don't know if you all have thought about how you could utilize both or one or the other. RCRP stands for Resource Center for RASA Planning. They actually do a lot more community engagement on a real, like, community-based level. And I just want you to be aware of that because I know about DPAC and I value their work. I just want to make sure it's not just focused on design. And that's not the only aspect that we want them to be involved in. So I want to make sure that RCRP gets a fair shake in being part of this process. They were actually part of the process in the past when we were looking at, at the redevelopment of, and the overlay of St. Michael's Drive. And they participated in what we called the Remike Project. So I think it's important to incorporate that background and their knowledge of communities of color. I don't know enough about how DPAC has been involved with communities of color or their makeup. And I don't know if Dr. Castillo wanted to elaborate because he might know more. But I'm just encouraging you to not just settle with DPAC is important. I think RCRP could be just as important and vital for this process.
I can chime in a little bit. It's great to have an alumnus on the council. So I really appreciate that. I think that's a very good point. I think we're in the sort of nascent stages of this discussion. So I think DPAC came in, but I think it would be great to engage Moisés Gonzales, who I know is really a part of the St. Mike's project. So I think Daniel and I could probably have a discussion about how to also incorporate RCRP.
Yeah, I think it would be important. Sorry, go ahead.
No, no, and I'm just going to turn it over to Daniel and see if he had any follow-up to that.
That sounds like a great idea. I, yeah.
Okay. And, and don't, I mean, if you want me to be involved in some way with that, please let me know. I just think that there's important components. And if it's really what you're looking for, DPAC may be a small part versus another aspect of the community engagement and consensus building piece. And then the other piece I just want to mention, because I never quite understood this, the Midtown District Association sounds very opaque and unclear about how they would function. And I want the developers to think about what that could look like. And maybe, I don't know if there's a correlation, but I feel like there's a connection of how that's, how you're seeing that structure, that Midtown District Association, and how that could possibly look more like a community land trust. And I know Daniel's sick of me talking about this, but I will keep bringing up land trusts as possible models as a component of this development. And I'd encourage you to look at the Sawmill Land Trust as a model. It's a local model in Albuquerque and just to see what that structure looks like in terms of governance. And maybe the Midtown District Association could be part, maybe that could be formulated in a different way. So I'm just, the way it's being described now is really confusing. So I would like to learn more about what that looks like and also how community land trust could be incorporated in this project. And that's, I think, all I have. One thing I did want to mention, you had referenced Somos en Pueblo Unido. They have it down in terms of how they're doing outreach with the Spanish-speaking community. And what has been most useful for them is using text. And they use a lot of text to be able to communicate that there's forums coming up that are virtual right now. And so I encourage us to think about how that could be utilized in English and Spanish. And also if we have some kind of network right now that people, that we can use at the city and that you all can utilize that would be able to help us do that outreach via text. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I think Councilwoman Ramara Worth has the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. The hour is late. Just, I look forward to meeting with you all and sharing some ideas. I'll just throw out one. I think in this time, we're probably going to want to use different mediums. So maybe we're going to need to use mail and to Counselor Viall's point, text. The council did just approve hotspots at locations around the city where people can hook into Wi-Fi if they don't have it. I know there are churches, I'm not sure if there are churches in New Mexico or just around the country that have, that bringing together their people to do services in their cars. Who knows what the potential there is? Maybe you bring people together in cars and they see some sort of presentation and then they can respond to it via text. I think we're going to need to use different kinds of mediums to solve, solve the problem of reaching the public in this time. So just throw that out. And I just want to say congratulations to the team and officially state that it is an exciting night, not a potentially exciting night. And, you know, look forward to working with you and seeing if we, if we can make this a really vibrant area for the city of Santa Fe. I think it's very exciting and there's a lot of potential. So thank you for your work and congratulations.
Thank you very much. We're excited.
Counselor Abada, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. I just want to welcome Rbaka. And yes, I have a lot of familiarity with Thaddeus Lucero from, he was a county manager in Bernalillo, and I was the Santa Fe County Manager. And I know they are very familiar with the South Valley there in Albuquerque gentrification issues that they've experienced there. And they're, I think they're going to do, do well here in Santa Fe, just knowing, again, especially Mr. Lucero and the contacts I had with him over the years. Welcome and thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Everybody's hanging in there. Are there any other council members who'd like to, to say a word or take this opportunity to summarize their thoughts on this evening? You don't have to hold up your hand with a little blue hand. You could wave or whatever works for you. If not, I think, Daniel, you have a few remarks about what happens next. I would just like to say, I think we took a huge positive step forward tonight. I think the opportunity is immense. It is historic. I think the video really displayed for all of us, I'd never seen it before. It displayed for me the diversity and the depth of talent that you've assembled. And I really am grateful to all the work you've already put into it. I want to compliment the staff. This is a monumental undertaking. This is going to last years as a project for Santa Fe that really defines a whole different economy, a whole different set of housing options, educational options, issues of social inclusivity. I had put together a list of 10 questions. The hour is late. I will just simply submit them as written questions for the FAQ. Just so you know, they range from public amenities to displacement, to art and culture, to dealing with economic uncertainty, to how far in the future you expect this project to stretch, the economic value you roughly estimate from past experience that it can create, how you evaluate your own proposal, how do you look at yourselves as your own strengths and the areas where you could use help in buttressing what you've already put together. I think you've heard tonight, there's an enormous amount of interest in and first level concern about public engagement and public trust. And I think that's a challenge, not just for you, it's a challenge for all of us. And we need to tackle it collaboratively and together. And then transportation you've touched on and sustainability, those are all things, design specs. That's what we're about to dig into. There is, we should be absolutely crystal clear. You did not present us with a master plan. There is no underlying master plan. The zoning doesn't even match many of the things we've all articulated that we want. So there's a lot of work to be done on so many levels. Engagement, planning, sustainability, housing, jobs, education, equity. That's the exciting part about what happens next. And I really appreciate the robust conversation and discussion tonight. Counselor Rivera, I see you popped your face back on the screen and went from being a symbol to a council member. Do you want to give us some concluding thoughts before I turn it back over to Daniel for next steps? I did not, again, I seemed to step over you before other people get second bites at the apple. So the floor is yours, Counselor.
Oh, I had to get off my eyes already. So had to take a little time to relax a little bit. But now I look forward to working with everyone, including my fellow councillors. I think similar to the rail yard, you know, 20, 30 years from now, we'll look back and see something that we're all proud of. And that's what I look forward to. So the real work starts now. So again, looking forward to working with everyone.
Thank you. Counselor Gao, I didn't mean to leave you out, but I didn't see a hand stuck up. So would you like to say a few thoughts before we turn it back to Daniel?
Thanks to everybody. Thanks to the team. This is, this is going to be an exciting project. You know, we're anxious to get it. You know, we're anxious to get it going, and we got a year. Let's, let's see what we can come up with, so thank, thanks, everybody. It's a long night and a lot of questions still to be asked. And see everybody soon, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. I think at this point, Daniel, you've got a few next steps, and then I think we can adjourn, but you have the last word.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to review some of the next steps relating, related to communications and public engagement. We are going to schedule a series of Meet the Developer, there isn't a predetermined amount. I sort of suggested four to five in a series, but we can extend that or reduce it based on what people want to have some topic-oriented discussions with developer in a similar sort of question-and-answer format. Initially, we're thinking about housing and housing affordability, transportation and connectivity, job creation, career training and job placement, sustainable sites and green building, master planning and urban design, arts and culture, higher education. So we'll, we'll, I'm thinking maybe we want to put a question out there about where the priorities are, and maybe even what order we want to do those. But again, there's no limit to how many we can have. Developers excited about entertaining these types of questions, because they'll also learn about where the priorities are for the city and the communities. Second thing I want to, we are, as you heard tonight, we're in the process of finalizing scopes of work with UNM, they're planning the Design Planning System Center, and we'll expand that to the other department or center that Renee had mentioned to make sure that we're, we're actually grabbing as many resources from the UNM and applying them to this project as much as we can. I have spoken with the Director of the UNM DPAC Department, Michael Pride, who's a resident of Santa Fe, who's really experienced in these planning efforts and comes at it from both actual experience in different cities around the country, but also an academic approach too, to think about what that, someone had asked earlier in the public about an interface that keeps the city accountable and keeps the developer accountable for the kinds of priorities we set and how we can track them. The other thing is, is that we want to make sure, I had mentioned it earlier tonight, that both city councilors and the mayor have an opportunity to host their own events. We can use this web, web interface, and there are others that they may want to suggest, Facebook or whatever they think that their constituents would be most comfortable using. Developers and the public engagement team will, and I will help facilitate those, meaning logistics and setting them up and calendaring them with you. But we anticipate that that will happen once the developers contact you, and you guys can decide how and when you want to do it. Another thing that's underway is we are working with Somos en Pueblo Unido. They have a Facebook, and they're really excited about working with us and having different conversations with the, with the developer and engaging their community, the community that they, that they have a lot of networks in. And those are all in Spanish, so we're excited about working with them on those. We will continue to coordinate with local radio stations and newspapers to help disseminate information as broadly as possible. Radio stations have been really excited about working with us because it creates a much more iterative dialogue with either elected officials, myself, developers, to provide factual information to the public and to try to keep it as factual and not so much editorializing that sometimes the newspapers will tend to get, but we'll continue to provide press releases to the newspaper to make sure that factual information is provided to them as well. We are expanding as much as possible our networks to local organizations and neighborhood associations throughout the city. Right now, I feel like we're really in a, in a mode of trying to get as much information out. And as we're getting information out, to try to begin understanding how local organizations are both communicating, getting information out, as well as getting information in. There's a lot to learn, we're in an unprecedented time, so we have to think about unprecedented avenues for actually engaging people in ways that we may never have thought about before. So I think that this is a way to think about Midtown, is setting the tone and possibly finding new ways of engaging people in public processes and creating places in our city. So I think those things will continue to evolve. I do want to say that we will continue to use the city's website for these public meetings. There's, there's a place where people do know already. We know that they are also available on the radio, so there's opportunities for people to hear and, and see and hear through both the YouTube access as well as through the radio station. The last one is, please visit the city's Midtown website. We will continue to put up frequently asked questions and the responses to them. We want to remain as clear and factual as possible so that the public has up-to-date information, they can continue to ask questions. This is not the only time you'll be able to ask questions. Again, you'll be able to ask them in the forums that I mentioned earlier. We also want to make sure that we're getting like the big questions that people frequently ask and give them factual information, so the city's website has all of that information on it. You can submit questions to info@midtowndistrictssantafe.com, and soon, we hope to have a phone number where people can actually call as well to provide information. But again, all of that will be on the city's website, city's Midtown website, so please go there to access information. So unless people have questions, maybe I'll just open that up for a second, and then I'll close it out. Do people have any questions about any of those next step, kind of communications efforts?
Thank you, Daniel, thank you, the entire governing body was a very historic night tonight, and I appreciate everybody's participation, questions, comments, concerns to our new partners. Congratulations, looking forward to working with you. I've had a little bit of experience with other projects, and they are, they're very difficult, and they take an enormous amount of patience and a great deal of willingness to collaborate and find our way forward in the best of times. So I think we all need to agree to work over and through and under and around any obstacles that come up. But for this evening, congratulations, it's great to be a partner with you, and we're glad to be able to work with you and your whole team as we go forward to the next phase where we get down to real planning, real ideas, real community engagement, and ultimately, real outcomes. So thank you all, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.